One, we are recording.
Alrighty, alright council, good to see you all. It is February 25th and it is 6:00 PM. And let's start on our boards and last night of our board and commission interviews. And if we are first up, we have Scott. Alrighty. Geez, I don't see him yet.
There he is.
There we go. Hey Scott, how you doing? This is Jerry.
I'm doing well. Good evening. Thank you.
Good. Thank you for joining us. We have you down for a couple of boards. And then it's, we have 10 minutes that goes real quick. So there won't be a lot of small talk. So don't take it personal. I'm going to turn it right over to Mayor Pro Tem Malin.
Hi, good evening Scott. My name is also Scott. I'm going to be asking you a few questions about the licensing authority. Starting with, have you read the powers and duties document for this board? Do you have any concerns regarding your ability to perform these duties?
I have not specifically read the powers and authorities document of that board. I have gotten as far as reading their previous meeting minutes and agenda that I could find. Based on what I've seen and my limited understanding of the board, I do not have any concerns with those duties.
Okay. Talk a bit about how you discern information from opposing sources to eventually produce a judgment.
I think it's important to listen as open-mindedly as I can to the sources. Hear their feedback before making my judgment. And in cases such as a city board where it's not really up to my judgment per se, as much as do, does the applicant meet the statutory or regulatory needs? In trying to remain as objective about it as possible.
Give us some insight into how you work with others with whom you might not agree.
So similar to hearing two sides of an argument, trying to be open to those different positions. Trying to have some humility actually, that my position may not be the best one. And being able to hear somebody out.
Share your thoughts regarding quasi judicial decision-making? And how do you see yourself working within a board governed by these rules? And if you don't know what quasi judicial decision-making is, we're happy to define it for you.
So my understanding of quasi judicial making is essentially we are a group that makes law, makes decisions that people have to then follow. I mean, the same as essentially another law. And so my sort of thoughts on that are that I would take it very seriously as a service to the city of Littleton and the citizens here. Trying to both uphold, let's say, business needs and interests, but community needs. And trying to follow the regulations that the city has laid out.
The licensing authority requires decisions that may substantially affect a business. Describe the process you will use to make decisions that could have both economic and social impact on the community.
So as an example, a friend of mine or former colleague of mine was on the licensing board some years ago and had to make some very difficult decisions around marijuana dispensaries. And how many could be allowed and how many may be grandfathered. And so it does affect people's livelihoods in some cases. And those could be difficult decisions to weigh. But I think it's important to look at, you know, what does the law and regulations lay out? And how can we follow that? As an example, when I was on the Board of Adjustment, we had a developer that wanted to start a condo development in downtown Littleton. And he wanted to work around some of the parking regulations. And as a board, we considered that and thought that while he had a sort of workable plan, it wasn't necessarily in the best interest of the community or even potentially the residents. And so while that may impact his business, we decided against it at that time.
And then before I pass it off, I, just looking at your application, would like to ask you, how might your experience working for the Colorado Secretary of State's Business and Licensing Division be relevant to serving on Littleton's Licensing Authority?
So I think the key, not specifically to licensing, but was the experience I had reviewing statutes? And ensuring that processes that we were establishing in the Secretary of State's office followed statutory requirements? And also working with members of the business community when they were starting new businesses, ensuring that the paperwork that they were filing was meeting the Colorado requirements.
That's all I have. I'm going to pass it off to, I think, Councilmember Elrod.
Councilmember Fay.
Fay, okay.
No, I think we're, yeah. So Councilmember Fay, if you will, please.
Hello Scott, my name is Carol. I have just four questions for you. First one, very similar to what you've got before. Do you have any concerns regarding your ability to perform the duties laid out in the city charter regarding the responsibilities for the Election Commission?
Very briefly, I do not have any concerns.
Next, by law, the Election Commission must draw new council district lines if the census shows a significant change. How would you ensure district lines would be drawn fairly?
Well, I think it would be important to look at whatever statutory guidance there is to say how the lines should be drawn. And then to also look at who could be involved in that. Trying to have a, I guess, a well-rounded, diverse, whether that's politically, by age, by gender, group that could draw those lines as possible. And then certainly trying to find maybe experience from similarly sized cities or similarly made up cities that we may be able to leverage and inform our own mapping.
Thank you. Next, currently the city uses traditional voting and campaigns are all mail-in. Share your thoughts on this system and if you would like to change anything.
I am actually a very big fan of mail-in voting of, since the time I was able to choose to get a mail ballot in Colorado. That was the choice I made. I think the people in the counties and Secretary of State's office that help run our elections, I try to do it as fairly as possible. So I'm sure there could be instances of impropriety or some issues that come up here and there. But I think overall, our election processes are pretty strong.
And finally, the City Clerk's Office is responsible for running fair elections in Littleton. How would you assist in this process?
So I would look for whatever role we could play as a commission to kind of champion the city's election processes, to reinforce the integrity of those processes. And thinking importantly, encourage people to vote.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Scott, thank you very much for joining us tonight and you have a good evening.
I appreciate it. Take care.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you now. All right. All right, we are ready for Dustin. Hello Dustin, this is Jerry. If you go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hey Jerry, how's it going?
Doing great, man. How you doing?
Doing well.
All right. So you have a couple of boards on here, one of which you're reapplying for. Thank you very much for doing that. Thank you for your service on that. So I'm going to turn this over. We only have 10 minutes as you know. But I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Councilmember Fay.
Okay.
Well, we have a few questions for a person such as you who's reapplying. And I thank you too for reapplying. First one, why have you decided to reapply to this board?
Well, I've enjoyed it. Myself, I'm an engineer and there's several other engineers on the board, a couple of lawyers, and I have been enjoying the camaraderie over the years. And we've been fortunate enough to work on some pretty interesting cases. None, none so much in the last year. It's been extremely quiet. But up until then, we've had some really interesting cases that we all were able to, to work together on successfully.
What have you learned during your time on the board?
Yeah, I'd say the biggest part is learning the legal aspect of it. You know, coming from an engineering background, that was kind of foreign to me. So I enjoyed getting up to speed on that. I'd say that's probably the biggest thing. And also getting up to speed on the international building code. I'm a mechanical engineer by training. And so I hadn't had much experience with that, with that code up until this point. So that was enjoyable.
What is your greatest accomplishment while on the board?
Greatest accomplishment, I would say, being present is a big one, you know. Making meetings, quite honestly, making the meetings, being on time and making a contribution.
How will you continue to contribute?
You know, what I would like to do is I haven't led the board up until now. I've been on it for six years now. And so I think it's probably, probably time for me to probably step up and throw my name in the hat. So I think that's probably the biggest thing I'll do this next go-around.
What have you enjoyed most about the board?
Well, I would say, yeah, the camaraderie of it. The biggest thing is the volunteer aspect of it, giving back to the community. That was the primary reason why I got on it, so.
And finally, what if anything, would you change about the board?
Gosh. I can't think of anything that I would change about it. I mean, I think we meet regularly enough. I think the time, you know, it's later at night. Of course, I wish it was during the day maybe, but.
Yeah.
Nice try.
So Dustin, I'm going to turn you back over to the mayor.
Okay.
All right, thank, thank you Carol. Thank you very much. Dustin, again, thank you for helping us out. And I'm assuming if you don't get one of your first or second choice, that you would be willing to serve on another board.
He hasn't interviewed for a second yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm going to turn it over to, but with that question on the table, I assume that that's true, that you would be willing to serve on another board or?
Yep, I sure would.
All right. And meanwhile, I'm going to turn you over to Councilmember Grove.
Okay.
Pam, are you there?
I'm the liaison to the Historical Preservation Board. How do you believe you can advance the mission of historic preservation in Littleton?
Well, I do have a building background and I have lived in the city of Littleton for close to 20 years now. And I've just spent a lot of time in downtown and other downtowns. And I just enjoy the, the historical aspect of it. And I would just, you know, I'd appreciate being a part of that as well.
Describe how you have personally been inspired by a Littleton preservation project, if you're aware of any.
Well, you know, I think the biggest one was the new building that went up by the melting pot. I think they had to get approval, you know, for the brick. And also there's a sports club right across the street from it as well. Can't think of the name of it right now. Yeah, and so I, you know, I understand that they had to go through that process and get the brick approved and the veneer and the exterior. And I think that's definitely something very worthwhile, so.
Okay. Have you thought about any other buildings or areas of the city that are worth preserving that aren't in downtown?
Let's see. Well, I would say probably some areas possibly around the museum. You know, that would be something I could think of, you know, that's an older area and some historic housing in that area, so.
Actually, I think the Carmelite Monastery is an historic building or worth preserving anyhow. HPP requires advocacy, learning and an understanding in the built and cultural environment. Are you willing to commit some time outside of HPP meetings to educate yourself on preservation? Go to, in other words, going to any kind of seminars or looking at a building or anything like that?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, we, my wife and I, we've taken those historic tours downtown and we found it very interesting. And that's kind of what inspired me to put this on my list as well. So yeah, I would definitely be interested in that.
But your preference is the first one actually, isn't it? I mean, it sounds like you're interested in being chair.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. My interest is the first one and this would be my second choice.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
All right Dustin, well, thanks again. And thanks again for serving on the building boards of adjustment. All right, great.
Okay.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Have a good one.
Thank you. All right. Well, we're ready for the next one, but he canceled on us, so we have a little bit of time. Unless someone else is up now.
Nobody is, but might this be, since we have an opportunity, might this be an opportunity to go over a couple of the things you and I discussed on the selection process?
Let's do that.
Okay, um, so I had sent out a revised order of boards and how they will be discussed for the selection process tonight. So hopefully you all got that. And if not, I'll guide you through it as we go. Some of the things that came up in conversation today, and thank you to everyone who sent in suggestions or called me, is having some time to potentially discuss some of the candidates. And so when appropriate, we will certainly make some time for that discussion. I think some of the candidates and some of the boards are going to be a pretty easy placement. There's, you know, some decisions will come together pretty quickly. I think on some of the boards, we may need to have some discussion and we'll certainly make opportunity for that. We also want to talk about potential ties. If we have two or three candidates that each get two or three votes for one seat, what we would do is then open up some discussion on those candidates. And then for that remaining seat, council would cast one vote out of those two candidates in order to break that tie and fill that seat. And then for the next gen process, Pam, what we would like to do is split that up into two sections. Since we have eight seats to fill, we'd like to do the two-year seats first, those five seats. And then once we've filled those, go back and do the three one-year seats. Does that work for you Pam?
Yeah, no, that's fine. One thing we didn't have was any student supply. Students can only serve for one year, so that is not the case. So everybody was a non-student, so everybody.
Is eligible for two.
Right. And some gave preferences of one person.
Okay, um, so that's what we've got. So are there any questions? We have a few minutes. Carol, you're muted.
I have a question about an applicant. I don't recall hearing from Catherine Holland.
Yeah, she was on.
Yeah. She interviewed.
First night, okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, I had a question. If we have a board that has an opening and we don't fill all the seats, can we go back later to somebody who we may think might be good to fill it at a later date? Or do we have, okay, so we don't have to fill them all, like if we've got not enough people? Because there's some that are a little bit short.
Yeah, we would, we would have some options. You could go back and kind of re-review the candidates from this round that didn't get placed. See if some, someone would fit. And if that's not the case, then we always have the option of doing a second recruitment.
And also if the person did not put it down as her first or second choice, would you, Colleen, or the mayor, or the liaison, call them and ask them if they would be interested?
Yeah, I'll be calling everybody that we select. And if we have somebody that we would like to appoint that was not an applicant for, but said that they would like to be considered, I would call them up. And if they accept, they accept. And if they don't, they're down. And then we're back to the drawing board on that particular selection.
And we actually have a little bit of time this cycle. Normally, council does interviews like Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, so that we can get those choices into a packet on Thursday for the first meeting in March for the motion to appoint. But because we're doing interviews for four nights, we knew there was no way I was going to get anything in a packet for you for next Tuesday. So we won't be doing the motion to appoint until your meeting on the 16th. So we do have a little bit of time to finalize what those appointments are going to look like. If we do have some boards that are running short and we maybe have to make some of those calls to offer those positions to people who didn't apply for them.
And if we have no one that really qualifies, we can go advertise again.
And then when are you going to notify people though? Do you have to wait till after they're appointed?
So the formal notification from the clerk's office would come the day after council makes the motion to appoint. That is when I would email everyone their letter of congratulations or their letter of, you know, thank you for applying. You know, you weren't successful this year, but please stay engaged in the community kind of thing. And then give them, the ones that are appointed, I would also give them information about their city email addresses and meeting dates and times and upcoming training and those kinds of things.
Thank you, Colleen. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Hey, so it's in regards to the alternates. I'm looking at HPP. You've got alternate one and two. How do you, how do we know, like say with Chris, Chris Geddes? Does Chris want to move up to be a regular member or does Chris want to stay as an alternate? How do we know that?
Okay.
We would just go ahead, we would make that decision as a council. Do we want to move her, in this case, Chris up? And we would just say yes, move her up. If she turned it down, I'd be surprised. No one has ever turned it down because they're on the board.
Nobody wants to stay an alternate.
Yeah, so, so in fact, since we're on HPP, so Chris would be the one we would move up. I guess that's the only one on that board, yeah.
And then we would be filling.
The other one, oh, the other one resigned, so.
Yeah, we'd have to fill two alternates.
We're making alt one, we select one for alt one and one for alt two.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So it's an automatic move up for Chris?
No, it's not automatic. It's our decision.
Okay, so that's, we'll have to somehow put that in our voting.
Well, yeah, but then the way I think we should do it when we get say to HP, first we look at that very thing first. Is there anybody, an alternate? That would, you know, attendance and all that stuff given, that we want to move up. And in this case, we would just say, yes, let's move up Geddes. And then that means the appointment or voting that will be on will be for alt one first. Second voting would be for alt two. Or we could just have one vote and the one gets the most votes will be alt one and the one gets the second most.
That's what I would recommend, because that's how we would handle it for the vacant seats anyway. Is whoever gets the most votes, kind of thing. Yeah.
Then to answer your question, Kelly.
Yeah, Kelly, most people don't want to stay alternates. It's a great way to kind of get onto the board, get their foot wet. They participate in conversations. But the reality is they don't get to vote. So after a while, you know, I think the goal is to.
Yeah, nobody turns like that. I see Paige is available.
Paige is available. Do we want to take her early?
Let's do it. She's available. Yeah, she wants to go. Let's do it.
Here we go.
Hi Paige, this is Jerry. Can you hear me okay?
Hi Jerry, this is Paige Alcorn. Yep.
Hey, thanks for joining us tonight.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
And we have to be for two boards, so we're, we have 10 minutes, so it goes pretty quick. So we're not going to have a lot of small talks. Don't take it personal.
No problem.
Turn it right over, right over to Councilmember Grove.
Hello Paige. Colleen, is there any way? I can't see Paige. Paige, do you have your video on?
You know, my, for some reason.
She hasn't put, doesn't have her video on. Your video's not on either.
Um, my, it says that my browser isn't supporting my camera, so I'm so sorry about that.
Not a problem.
Pam, your video's not on either.
I can see Pam.
Weird.
Huh.
Really?
I can see Pam too.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's go to the questions.
We'll go to the questions. I'm going to be the ones to ask any questions for both Historical Preservation Board and the next gen. So first of all, let's start with Historical Preservation Board. Have you read the powers and duties of this board? And do you have any concerns about your ability to perform them? And if you didn't read them, I can give you a quick update.
Yep, I did read them this afternoon. I think everything sounds good. This would be my first time on a board, so just kind of a learning curve for that. But I feel confident in my ability to learn and be able to perform the duties.
How do you believe you can advance the mission of historic preservation in Littleton?
Yeah, so I am a lifelong resident of Littleton. So I feel like I have a pretty good pulse on kind of what we've got going. I do also, I'm just, I'm interested in learning more about the history of Littleton. And I do have a bachelor's degree in anthropology that had an emphasis in archaeology and specifically I was interested in historic archaeology. So I've got kind of a basis in that.
Okay. Um, have, describe how you have personally been inspired by a Littleton preservation project, if you're aware of any.
Sure, so would like the Littleton Historical Museum.
Yes, whatever.
Okay, yeah. I mean, I have been going to the Littleton Historical Museum since I was kid, a kid. And that really inspired me for, to go for my anthropology degree, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, what other buildings or areas of the city do you think are worth preserving that are not in downtown?
Yeah, I think like the Aberdeen Village area where kind of those mid-mod houses are. I think some of that history is really cool and definitely should be preserved.
Okay. Are you familiar with the fact that HPP is a quasi judicial board? Where you act as a judge mainly on land use or updating buildings? Sometimes there might be conflicting testimony. Describe how you would arrive at a factual conclusion, even when it conflicts with your personal opinion?
Sure, absolutely. You know, I think really just sticking to the facts, being able to hear both sides of the conflict. And really, I think using any type of like laws or bylaws to also influence my decision to make sure that we're sticking with those.
Sometimes as a member of the Historical Preservation Board, you might have to attend some outside meetings for educations like a seminar or maybe go look at some buildings. Would that be a problem?
Not at all. No, I would love that actually.
Okay, and this is a Monday night meeting. I can't remember which Monday night, but they meet on.
I think the third I saw.
Third, okay, you're ahead of me. I forget. I've been on the Historical Preservation Board. I was on for 10 years, so. How quickly we forget. Okay. Is there any, do you have any questions on that? And then if not, I'm going to turn you over to, I'll ask about the next gen group. But if you have any questions, I can answer about historical preservation.
Um, you know, I guess the one question I have would be, are there anything, is there anything like big projects or things that are happening right now with the Historical Preservation Board?
Oh, definitely. They're working on a historic district in downtown around Alamo. They're working on a list of historic buildings in the Littleton area. They're probably gearing up for their grant program where they get city funds to help upkeep. help business owners upkeep their historical buildings. So they have lots of big projects. And as a member of that group, you can kind of pick and choose which project you want to work on. And so you have, you know, beyond just the meetings.
Cool, that sounds great.
Okay, let me ask you a few questions about the Next Gen group. And the first big question is, as of this April 1, are you between the ages of 18 and 36?
I am, yes.
Okay. Can you elaborate a little bit on why you decided to apply for this group?
Yeah, you know, again, as a lifelong resident of Littleton, I think it would be great to be able to influence kind of what, where Littleton is moving in the future. I plan to stay here probably for the rest of my life. So I think just being able to be involved and, you know, help guide Littleton into the future is super interesting to me.
What do you think are the key issues that Littleton will be facing over the next three to five years?
Oh, gosh, that's a great question. You know, I think one thing is probably affordable housing and just, you know, being able to have younger families or even younger professionals be able to move into the area and be able to afford it and enjoy it. You know, I think, gosh, I think that's probably the biggest one. And then also, I think that would be the impact on schools as well. So just being able to keep our schools going and have enough kids and young people. I think honestly, those are probably the two biggest that I see.
Okay, that's good. How do you think you could best contribute to this committee? What kind of skills or background or interests that you would bring, other than what you've mentioned up until now?
Sure, yeah. So I am actually a recruiter for National Jewish Health. So I think I have a really good ability to make connections with people and, you know, potentially advance this committee's initiatives. I think great communication skills. I also am pretty organized and detail-oriented, so could keep minutes for the meeting, make sure that people stay on track, things like that.
Hi. Sometimes a group has some difference of opinions when providing feedback to the city or staff or council. How will you interact or work when it comes to individuals who you may not agree with?
Oh, sure. You know, I think the best, the biggest thing is to stay professional and not take any differences or conflicts personally. And really, you know, work with that person or that group individually to really learn where they're coming from and potentially make a compromise.
Okay. Would there be any obstacles attending a meeting for the Next Gen on the first Thursday of the month?
No, I'm totally open.
Okay. And if you were selected for the Next Gen Committee, would you be interested in a one-year term or a two-year term starting April 1?
Really, I would be up for either. Probably the two-year.
Two-year.
But could do one, yeah.
But your real preference is Historic Preservation, right?
I would say so. That would be my top choice. But I am really just interested in getting involved more in the city. So I would be happy to serve on both, on either.
Okay, and the last minute we have, is there any questions you have about the Next Gen Committee or the Historical Preservation Board that you want to ask?
I would say same question for Next Gen, kind of what are their initiatives that they're working on currently?
What they do is they have discussions and do research and prepare white papers. And some of the things that they've worked on is the Weekends on Main program, the ULUC code update, sustainability. Right now, they're looking into maybe doing some things on homelessness, inclusivity, diversity. That's kind of one of their areas. I think sustainability may come back up again. They're just finishing up their year now. And then when the new group comes on, they'll put together a new work plan that will then be submitted to council with some new topics that are coming before council.
Gotcha. Great.
Some are already kind of set, and some council will set, and some they'll come up with.
Perfect.
Well, thank you. I'll turn it back over to Jerry.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Pam. All right, Paige. And Paige, should you not be selected for your first or second choice? Are you willing to be considered for another Board of Commission if we think that you would qualify for that?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm open.
Great, great. Well, thank you very much for joining us tonight.
All right, thank you.
Have a good night. All right, thank you. Now, the only videos that I see are Carol and Karina. Is everybody else's video on?
Yeah.
Yeah, because you, Karina, you see all the others?
I don't see Pat.
I don't see Pat either.
I don't think Pat's video is on.
Okay, all right, just as long as it's not our screen.
Nope.
Yeah, I'm wondering why, well, Pam, I don't even, Pam, I just have a big P.
Well, I'm a guest. For some reason, I come in as a guest.
Are we ready for Molly?
Let's go ahead. Hi, Molly. This is Jerry. How you doing tonight?
Hi, Jerry. I'm good. How are you?
Doing great, thank you. And thank you for joining us. We have you down for a reappointment. Thank you for serving on the Fine Arts Board.
Yes.
All right, well, we have just a few questions for you. It'll go pretty quick. I'll turn it over to Councilman, Councilmember Elrod.
Thank you, Jerry. Hi, Molly.
Hi, Karina.
Okay, I have a few questions. We do have different questions for members that are reapplying. So I'll go through those first, and then might go back to some of the other questions that we also ask new candidates. So I will just go and jump right in. So why have you decided to reapply to the Fine Arts Board?
So I've really enjoyed meeting the people on the board and getting to know the processes behind, like, all the great stuff that I've known for a while in the city. So it's been really cool to kind of see behind the curtain how this all comes together. But I just think it's important to sort of participate and do my civic duty to be a part of what makes Littleton great. So that's, that's why I want to be involved, and that's, I guess, what I try to do.
What have you learned during your time on the board?
Wow, so much. You know, I have an idea about what public art and fine art, or I had an idea. But I've learned a lot about, you know, what that means to be sort of a steward of the art that's in the public trust. And Jenny at the museum has been so informative to really bring all of us along and about learning what that is. You know, really, it's not just, you know, like, pick out art that we like, but really being responsible about, you know, we're spending, we have the privilege to spend tax dollars on art. That's amazing. But having that responsibility of making sure that it's what's in the public trust.
And what would you say is your greatest accomplishment while on the board?
So I think we, as a group, we spent a lot of time developing, like, the guidelines. I'm forgetting the terminology for it, that sort of defined how we select art to help, because we were getting a lot of just, people wanted to donate things that weren't necessarily, again, going back to the public trust, weren't necessarily related to Littleton, or, and then we have to maintain it and keep it up in perpetuity. And so we developed this document that really helps define what that is, how we acquire. And then I think it's called deexceptioning pieces as well, so that, you know, now we have a document that when somebody comes to us with a piece, we have this formal document that we can say, this is how the process goes. So I think that was, that was huge. That's what I'm most proud of.
Yeah, that is huge. Remind me, is this your second term or your third term on the board?
This will be my second term. So I'm in my first, wrapping up my first. This would be my second term.
Okay. So how do you, how do you see yourself continuing to contribute to the board?
So I'm really excited about the work that the Arts and Culture Commission is doing and seeing how, you know, they can really drive interest into what we're doing in Littleton. And then how we sort of, you know, work together with them to bring more art to the city. So that's what I'm excited about. And I just, I like getting to know other people in the city of Littleton that I wouldn't necessarily, I mean, right now, I don't see anybody on the street, but that I wouldn't necessarily interact with day to day. So that's been great to get to know some of the other people in Littleton.
You touched on this, or some of your comments allude to this next question, but I will ask it directly. What have you enjoyed most being on the board?
Yeah, I guess I've enjoyed getting to know my other board members. I've enjoyed, it's really fun to get to participate in all of the art, the exhibit openings that we do at the museum. That's been really, really cool. So, yeah, it's just fun to be a part of Littleton. There was a, the session with Envision Littleton a few years ago now. I can't remember the guy's name, but he wrote a book called, like, Love Your City or Love Where You Live. And I think there's a ton of really cool ideas in there of like how we can bring culture and art to just everyday life. So I'm looking forward to trying to do more of that.
Yeah, me too. What, if anything, would you change about the board?
Gosh. That's a tough question. I would, I, I feel like a lot we get, we get into a pattern of like, well, this is how it's always done. This, well, we do it this way because this is how it's always done. And that's what I would change. If it's not a bylaw, or if it's not written down that this is just because it's habit or it's what's expected of us, I think there's room to grow and opportunity to make things better. So that's what I would change of like, just because it's what we've always done doesn't mean it's what we should keep doing and it's the best thing we could be doing.
Does anything come to mind that we're doing just because we've always done that you'd like to change?
So we actually have changed a few things recently. And it's been as a result, I think, of, not because of me pushing that, but just sort of happenstance with the pandemic and everything and budget cuts. So we've changed the schedule a little bit of like, well, we do these exhibit shows this way because this is what we've always done. Well, now we've been able to sort of consolidate some of those shows. Jenny and the team at the museum showed how if they consolidated shows, there's actually opportunity to have them up longer and have just better, better shows. And so then that also opens up the opportunity. If we're doing different things, if we're doing fewer shows, then we could maybe have funding to do some of these more, like, temporary installations or something else with the budget that we have as the Fine Arts Board. So that is, that is pretty cool. But just even changing the schedule so that the shows we have are more, they're more available because they're up longer. It just, there were so many benefits to changing that.
Great. Well, thank you for being a part of making that happen. I think that's all we have. I don't have any more questions. So Jerry, I'll hand it over to you.
All right, thank you, Karina. And thank you, Molly, for the last three years that you've served on there. So do you prefer the Zoom meetings or the in-person meetings?
My eyes prefer to be in person, the blue light for like, you know, I'm going on my, actually, 11th hour of Zoom meetings today. So it gets a little intense after a while. I'm sure we're all ready for things to open up again. There is something nice about not having to commute, but I would love to be in person again very soon.
Same here. Well, again, thank you very, I'm sorry.
I was just going to, Molly, are you between the ages of 18 and 36 by April 1?
No.
All right, Molly. Well, thank you very much with that.
Okay.
Thank you very much, and you have a good evening.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Thanks for your time. I know you're all, you've got these stacked up, so thank you.
Bye.
Thank you. All right. Did Katie check in?
We do not have Kate yet.
Okay.
Yeah. Might council want to take their break a little early and come back?
We, that will be our next thing. Why don't we do that? Okay, so come back at 6:55. Great, we'll take 10 minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Colleen, are you there?
I am.
I have, yeah, for some reason, Pam, I don't get her picture, or Scott's.
And you might not on Teams, Jerry. I am not seeing most of the applicants, but once the video renders, I see everybody.
Is that right? Oh, I see Kate, Kate just pulled up too, I see.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's maddening that they keep popping in and out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we'll be back at 5:55 after.
Okay, thanks, Jerry.
Great. All right. Everybody coming back? All right, Col, I see that Kate is there. So we, alls we need now is all of council.
That's what we're waiting on.
All right. Let me know when they're all there again, because for me, for whatever reason, it's, it's not showing up.
I will let you know.
Thank you.
Uh, we're waiting for Carol and Karina.
All right. And this will be yours, Kelly. There's Karina. All right. Alls we need is Carol. Are you there yet? All right, there's Carol. All right. Okay. I, I think we are ready to bring up Kate.
Here you go.
Thank you. Hi Kate, this is Jerry. How you doing?
I'm good. How are you?
Doing well. Thank you very much for joining us.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you for having me.
All right. So we have 10 minutes. You have one selection here. So, uh, I'm going to turn it right over to Councilmember Milliman and won't be a lot of small talk, so don't take it personal. We're just trying to get right to the questions. So Councilmember Milliman.
Hey Kate, how are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. Thank you. So, uh, Littleton, uh, so the South Metro Housing Options, um, that board meets every, uh, the first Thursday of each month at 6:30 PM. Um, and I do have a couple of questions for you.
Okay.
Um, first one, uh, I'm going to talk about affordable attainable housing. There's a great deal of conversation around the need for affordable and attainable housing. There's also a great deal of misunderstanding around, about these programs. Would you please share your thoughts on how to best balance the need for this type of housing? And the public's demand that it not be in their quote backyard?
Um, sure. So I have extensive professional experience working in affordable housing in particular, uh, from a public relations communications perspective. So I, I'd like to believe I do have some experience from a work perspective of overcoming, overcoming NIMBYism and clarifying for communities that are concerned about affordable housing, what actually affordable housing is. Um, and explaining it in layman's terms for, for people to understand and get more comfortable and recognize that it's their aging parents, it's their young children who are trying to just make it and move out of their basement. And I think we do have an opportunity now more than ever with COVID for people to actually really understand um, how important a home is and how challenging it can be. We've come a long way in, in understanding over the decades of, of what affordable housing actually is and it's, and it's not just the, the stereotype and all of us have been impacted by it.
Great. Thank you for that answer. Um, so this board manages public funds to support their mission. Have you had, have you had any experience in the handling of public funds? If so, can you please explain? And if not, can you share your thoughts, um, with regards to the stewardship of public funds?
Sure. I have, uh, spent my career in nonprofit or quasi-government sector. I worked for the house, the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority for a number of years, um, administering small business loans, actually. So, um, individually responsible for administering public funds in that capacity. And certainly as a senior leader with Mercy Housing have, um, the ownership and, uh, um, responsibility in, in that regard. I, I don't do it on a day in, day out job basis, but, um, as a senior leader, I'm, I'm on the hook, so to speak.
Thanks. So clearly homelessness is a, homelessness is an issue that is a growing concern to communities, um, such as our own.
Yeah.
What are some of the ways a housing authority can support a community who is seeing an increase in this social concern?
It's, homelessness is a really challenging issue and, and unfortunately there is no one way or one way to get out of it or fix it or resolve it. You can't build your way out of it. You can't. So I think it's a very multifaceted, uh, complicated issue. So I think services, services certainly, um, are a component. More housing is also, um, critical as well as prevention, right? How do you, how do, how do we help on the front end of it before it becomes a problem? So, um, I, I know that isn't a concrete answer to your question, but there are many different ways to help the problem. Um, it is a growing concern and, and unfortunately there isn't a quick fix for it.
I would agree with that. So this board is very committed to providing people a way towards self-sufficiency and promoting dignity, diversity, and individuality. Would you please share the skills that you could bring, um, to support this mission?
Yeah, you bet. Um, my professional experience, I have worked, um, all in mission-based organizations. Um, I have, um, primarily worked with low-income individuals in some capacity, but my passion has really been, um, commitment, commitment to community, commitment to, um, a better life and, and opportunity and equality for people. Um, so I bring a, a deep amount of passion, both from my professional work experience, but my personal. Um, I think I, I have always, um, it hasn't just been a job for me. Um, and I've gotten to a place in my personal life of where I really want to give back to my community. I continue to spend a lot of time professionally and, and not, and not where I live. And I'm now at a place where I really care about my neighborhood and my child's future and, and really want to make a difference where I live. So that's really what has prompted me to, um, apply for this position. I'm committed, I'm honest, I'm balanced, I'm a collaborator, um, and dedicated and committed. So, um, that, that's what I have to offer.
No, thanks. It's a lot of thank you. And so the last question is, what does a successful housing authority look like to you?
Hmm. That's a tough one. Um, I think fulfilling the needs in the community and that doesn't, there's always going to be a need, right? I mean, as I said earlier, affordable housing, there is such a crisis in this country. And so when I say fulfilling the needs in the community, I don't mean just building our way out of it or, you know, you can't get enough of it. I think it is, um, identifying the community, the neighborhood, uh, engagement and collaboration with the larger neighborhood and what is actually really needed versus, um, just going and building, say, or redeveloping, whatever. Um, but it also is important that we look at the fabric in the, in the community, the real estate, the other people that are living in that area, working in that area, and that it all is integrated. It's important to be a good community partner.
Great. Thanks Kate so much. Thanks for coming. Yeah. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you. Thank you. Am I, am I off the hook now?
Hey, Kate, you did a great job. Thank you very much for applying, uh, and you have a good night.
All right. Thank you. You too.
Thanks now. Thanks for joining us. Bye-bye. All right. We are ready for Todd. It'll be transportation, Scott. Hi Todd, this is Jerry. How you doing?
Good, Jerry.
All right. Thanks for joining us tonight and applying for the board, uh, Transportation Board. So, uh, it's a 10-minute, uh, less than 10-minute interview in this case probably, but, uh, we don't do a lot of small talk because we just get right to the questions. So don't take it personal. So I'm going to hand it over to the Mayor Pro Tem, Malin.
Thanks, Mayor. Hi there, Todd. Thanks for hopping on a few minutes early. That helps us move along. We appreciate it. Um, what interests you about transportation?
I think transportation and mobility can really help a community, especially when you offer a lot of different modalities and, um, it, it can help a, a community be healthier, uh, more engaged, more vibrant. When you have options like, uh, biking and safe, safe routes and light rail. So I think it just, uh, makes for a real progressive, um, very desirable community when you do transportation, right?
Of all the modes of transportation, auto, transit, pedestrian, bicycle, which gets you most excited and why?
Definitely bicycle because, um, it's, uh, it's nice to get out on the bike. You can, uh, cover a lot of area. You can, uh, be healthy, get some exercise. Um, I think, I think, uh, got me interested when I was in the, uh, the Leadership Academy with Karina and we, we did our projects and mine was, uh, to create a bike share program for the community. So I did reach out to a lot of people and got opinions and, uh, and I think that would be my, uh, my greatest interest.
Uh, tell us how you think Littleton funds, street maintenance and transportation?
So how does Littleton, well, I, I think you probably get a combination of national, state and city funds. Uh, but I know it's a problem trying to get funds for capital improvements. That's, that's something you, I believe is still a challenge to do some of those projects, not have a reliable source of funding.
Transportation is a regional issue. What are the most important regional transportation issues facing Littleton and the region?
Well, uh, reading a little bit of the TMP, I, I realize a lot of people pass through Littleton on the way to somewhere else. So there's a lot of, lot of traffic and congestion in different areas, people moving through the community. So that's, that's a big need, but just that Santa Fe quarter, uh, probably is ripe for a lot of improvements, not only through, for the region, but for the city too, and how to connect the downtown better. Uh, and, and the Platte River just may connect the city of Littleton better because there's a lot of divisions, you know, natural geographic divisions.
How do you define mobility?
Getting from one place to another safely and, uh, without hassle.
If you had to list in order how the city should spend its transportation dollars, what would be your top three?
I would say kind of back to improving the Santa Fe, uh, quarter, probably number one. Number two, just address all the dangerous intersections where there's been more, say, car and pedestrian bike accidents and address those. Uh, and three would, I don't know if it's a transportation issue, but how, how to connect Littleton Boulevard better with downtown Littleton. How to make that more appealing, um, easier to, to make your way into the city, uh, and making that whole area more desirable.
And then the last question, give us your top two ways to educate and engage the community about transportation issues.
I think nothing educates better than having demonstrations. Uh, I, I like what like city or the LPS does with the bike program in the schools. I think that's, uh, I think what Robin does is really instrumental. Um, I think, uh, education of the community, however that's done through, uh, Littleton Independent or other sources, just education's always the first step if you want to make change.
And, uh, I'll pass it back to the mayor. Thanks so much, Todd.
Sure.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you very much. All right. So Todd, if, should you not be selected for this board or, well, wait, do you live in Littleton or Centennial?
I live in Centennial. I live really close to Clarkson.
Gotcha. Yeah, that's, that's, yeah. So you went and qualified for some other boards, but thank you so much for being with us tonight. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. And, uh, I know you have a lot of interviews tonight, so appreciate your time.
All right. Thank you so much. Have a good night. Bye-bye.
Great to see you, Todd. Well.
See you later. Thanks.
Take care. All right. All right. Thank you. We are down to Craig and, and then one other, we have two people left. So we'll take on Craig and that'll be me for the reappoint for plan commission. Hey Craig, this is Jerry. How you doing?
Hey, good. How are you? Can you hear me okay?
Great. I can hear you fine. You're fine. Uh, thanks for joining us tonight. So we'll probably, uh, we, we have allocated 10 minutes. Probably only need about five since you are reappointed.
Okay.
And that's, this is your second time on planning commission. And so I'm going to get right to it. So, uh, why have you decided to reapply for the plan commission?
Oh, I love doing this. I really enjoy, um, working with the, the group. Oh, I love doing this. I really enjoy working with the group of planning commissioners that we have and will have. And I just, you know, I really appreciate where I live, and the city of Littleton, I think, is a great place to be, and I'd like to try to keep it that way in any way I can by giving back to the community through the planning commission service.
Right. And what have you learned during your time on the planning commission?
Oh, like you said, this is my second time around. I was on planning commission between 2010 and 2013, I think it was, and then moved to Arizona for a while, came back and re-upped. And so over, you know, a six- or seven-year span here, I've learned, you know, something every meeting. We've, you know, obviously had some different staff that we've worked with, different city attorneys, different planners, different councils, different experts that have come in, and I've learned a tremendous amount. My work in, my real job is a planner, landscape architect with Denver Parks and Recreation. So I'm particularly interested in open space and advocating for better places, better urban design, better walkability, and so on. So I think the thinking about that has evolved over time, and so I've learned a lot, and I've also applied, I think, my thoughts and my experience to where we've gone, especially through the comprehensive planning process.
And so what would be your greatest accomplishment, most serving on the planning commission?
Oh, well, I suppose, you know, the first time around, I achieved the position of Chair of the planning commission, and that was a huge accomplishment, and I was very proud of that. And unfortunately, I did have to leave because we had a relocation. But, you know, I guess in terms of accomplishment, every, everything that we approve or consider or weigh in on, I feel a sense of accomplishment. And, you know, especially in the concurrence of peers and, you know, understanding, you know, what the input of our public or the people that are providing input, listening to that, and then sort of translating it in terms of our dialogue, conversation, and collaboration into, you know, a decision. So I don't, I can't point to one, you know, I guess the accomplishment of completing the comprehensive plan was a big accomplishment, but there's others ahead.
Yeah, we're in a little of that now. So describe how you will continue to contribute to the planning commission.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, Jerry?
Describe how you will continue to contribute to the planning commission.
Okay. Well, you know, I guess in terms of just being there, I've attended just about every meeting. I think the last meeting was the first one I've missed since I've been appointed. Unfortunately, we're out of town. But I plan on being an active and vocal member at all the meetings, you know, coming to meetings prepared and understanding the issues. And so I intend to continue to be actively, actively involved.
And what have you enjoyed most about being on planning commission?
Oh, just the sense of service and giving back to the community. Met a lot of good people here and have enjoyed the conversation and feel like provided a contribution to the betterment of the city. And so that's the, my ultimate goal and vision is just to provide service, give back to the community, and also make this a better place to live.
Yeah, great. Thank you. And last question, anything that you would change about the planning commission?
That's a good question. You know, I don't know. I think that it functions well. I think that staff prepares us well for the meetings. I think our dialogues are good. I would certainly, as you all probably would rather be meeting in person, I think that the virtual thing's getting a little bit old. But, you know, even that has been effective. You know, I think we haven't skipped a beat. But, you know, in terms of the way the planning commission functions, you know, I think we weigh in where we need to. I think, you know, sometimes I wish we knew a little bit more about, or were involved a little bit more in some of the development proposals, but we recognize that that's really a staff role, and our role as planning commissioners and volunteers is to be at a higher level and be a check on that. But I'm always interested in getting into the weeds, so I do, you know, when something all of a sudden, you know, pops out of the ground, it's like, I didn't hear about that. I sometimes wish we did hear a little bit more, but understand the sort of legalities and appropriate roles of the planning commission.
Great. Craig, that is it. And thank you very much for spending some time with us tonight.
Okay. Well, thanks. I'm glad to see you all. It's good to see your faces. Yeah, have a good evening.
Have a good evening. All right. Bye-bye.
All right. Bye-bye.
All right. We are down to our last one, and it'll be with Karina. So is Kate, she signed in yet?
Not yet.
We are running about 15 minutes early, so why don't we just, why don't we spend about 10 minutes to ourselves, just getting your information figured out? How's that? So let's come back at 7:30.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Colleen, I see Kate has joined us.
Yes.
All right. She's plenty early. You know, I think once we get past the first few boards, it's going to go real fast.
Yeah, I think we're in good shape.
Yeah, I do too.
I think we're okay.
Yeah, yeah. And I've made some notes that I'll email to you on, some things that I was thinking about on the application changes, like you and I talked about today. I thought of a few more.
Okay. Okay. I'm anxious to see those, so I can kind of start mocking something up.
Oh, I bet. I bet. Yeah. And hopefully other folks, they may have something as well, so that would be cool.
Yeah. Yeah, I've had, I've had lots of suggestions and why can't we? So I think it's good. Yeah.
Cool. If you have time, I'll give you mine right now.
Well, we are still recording, so.
Oh, I'll email them to you. That'll be.
Okay, great. Thanks, Jerry.
You're welcome. All right, we got about two minutes. So, Colleen, when we do the selection process, let us know if we're going too fast, because, so that you can keep accurate records for us, please.
Absolutely. And also by using the chat to cast your, I'll have a record of it. So we're good.
Yeah. Oh, that's right, because that doesn't go away. Yeah, it'll just be the final selection part. Is, now, does teams have a whiteboard on it?
Like Zoom? It does not. But I can share my screen when we, based on selections, I can update each of these summary boards real quick as we do them, and share my screen to make sure I've captured what we agreed to for that, that board.
That'll be good.
Okay. Yeah, we can do that.
Cool. We're going to have this sewed down, and next year is going to be a breeze. All right. Is everybody back? Yep. Great. All right. If we're ready to bring Kate up, let's do it. Hi, Kate, this is. Hi, Kate, this is Jerry, how you doing tonight? Hi, Kate, this is Jerry, how you doing tonight? Hi, Kate, this is Jerry, how you doing tonight? Well, I think for the reappoints, it's important that, that we do recognize that
Good evening, City Council, I'm doing well, thank you. I hope you all are too. Good evening, City Council, I'm doing well, thank you. I hope you all are too. Good evening, City Council, I'm doing well, thank you. I hope you all are too.
they are reappointments.
I think we can recognize that with our vote, though.
We are, we are. And thank you for joining us again for your reapplying. So, that's great. We are, we are. And thank you for joining us again for your reapplying. So, that's We are, we are. And thank you for joining us again for your reapplying. So, that's
What?
I agree with Pam. I don't think it needs to be a separate step.
great. So, I'm gonna turn it, we have less than 10 minutes, so we're gonna just zip great. So, I'm gonna turn it, we have less than 10 minutes, so we're gonna just zip So, I'm gonna turn it, we have less than 10 minutes, so we're gonna just zip right through You want, you want to go ahead?
Vote for who we think are the best candidates.
right through this thing. I'm gonna turn it over to Councilmember Elrod. right through this thing. I'm gonna turn it over to Councilmember Elrod. this thing. I'm gonna turn it over to Councilmember Elrod.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, we can do it that way. All right, Colleen, did you have anything
Hey. Hello, Councilmember Elrod. Hey. Hello, Councilmember Elrod. Hey. Hello, Councilmember Elrod.
you wanna add?
No, I think I added everything earlier this evening on one of our breaks. So, just
Hello, Kate Howard. No chit-chat for us, and we're gonna go straight to business. Hello, Kate Howard. No chit-chat for us, and we're gonna go straight to business. Hello, Kate Howard. No chit-chat for us, and we're gonna go straight to business.
a quick reminder that we're gonna use the chat feature for this, since we're not in
Okay. Okay. Okay.
So, I'm just really gonna, going to jump right into the questions, and of course, I thank So, I'm just really gonna, going to jump right into the questions, and of course, So, I'm just really gonna, going to jump right into the questions, and of course,
a room together where you can hand me your little slip of paper. And so, we're gonna
I thank you for reapplying. You've been great on the board. Okay, could you please describe I thank you for reapplying. You've been great on the board. Okay, could you please describe you for reapplying. You've been great on the board. Okay, could you please describe your
go through these in order, as established earlier today, starting with the Planning
your experience working in or supporting the arts and culture of the community? your experience working in or supporting the arts and culture of the community? experience working in or supporting the arts and culture of the community?
Commission, then on to Election Commission, Transportation and Mobility, Licensing,
Absolutely. So, I spent actually eight years on the Fine Arts Board, one year as Absolutely. So, I spent actually eight years on the Fine Arts Board, one year as Absolutely. So, I spent actually eight years on the Fine Arts Board, one year as
Historical Preservation, South Metro Housing, Arts and Culture, Next Gen, Fine Arts Board,
vice chair, and then two years as the chairperson. And during that time, we did some really vice chair, and then two years as the chairperson. And during that time, we did some really vice chair, and then two years as the chairperson. And during that time, we did some really good
Board of Adjustment, and finally Building Board of Appeals. And yes, Karina, I got
good stuff. We actually developed a strategic plan while I was on the board there. You good stuff. We actually developed a strategic plan while I was on the board there. You stuff. We actually developed a strategic plan while I was on the board there. You could see
your message, thank you.
Thanks.
could see some of the sculpture pieces that we actually purchased in downtown city of could see some of the sculpture pieces that we actually purchased in downtown city of some of the sculpture pieces that we actually purchased in downtown city of Littleton. Whether
And so, what we will do is we will look at each board, look at the number of vacancies.
Littleton. Whether you like them or not, it's actually the bike racks, but we're happy Littleton. Whether you like them or not, it's actually the bike racks, but we're happy you like them or not, it's actually the bike racks, but we're happy that those are there
For instance, Planning Commission is our first board. We technically have four vacancies.
that those are there and, and that they really define the space within art. And then with that those are there and, and that they really define the space within art. And then with and, and that they really define the space within art. And then with the development
So, I would need each council member to provide me four names, and then we will tally
the development of the Littleton Arts and Culture Commission, I really participated the development of the Littleton Arts and Culture Commission, I really participated of the Littleton Arts and Culture Commission, I really participated in that quite actively.
names, and whoever gets the most votes. If it happens to be someone who's a reappoint,
in that quite actively. I'm currently serving as the vice chair on that committee, and in that quite actively. I'm currently serving as the vice chair on that committee, and I'm currently serving as the vice chair on that committee, and am in charge of the subcommittee
that's awesome. If not, we'll go on to the next one, and so on, until we have filled
am in charge of the subcommittee of programming. And during that time with programming, a am in charge of the subcommittee of programming. And during that time with programming, a of programming. And during that time with programming, a lot of ideas have come forth lot of ideas have come forth about what we want to do on the Littleton Arts and Culture lot of ideas have come forth about what we want to do on the Littleton Arts and Culture
our positions. If we have anyone who is an alternate, we will look at whether or not
about what we want to do on the Littleton Arts and Culture Commission. So, I really Commission. So, I really put together a whole strategic plan in, you know, what, what types Commission. So, I really put together a whole strategic plan in, you know, what, what types
we want to move them up to a regular position, and then that fourth position would be filled
put together a whole strategic plan in, you know, what, what types of activities do we of activities do we wanna see? What's the cost involved? What are the event planning of activities do we wanna see? What's the cost involved? What are the event planning wanna see? What's the cost involved? What are the event planning that we need to do?
as an alternate, so.
that we need to do? And then who we need to reach out to, to the community? So, those that we need to do? And then who we need to reach out to, to the community? So, those And then who we need to reach out to, to the community? So, those are some of the highlights are some of the highlights that I've done while serving on both of those committees. are some of the highlights that I've done while serving on both of those committees.
Okay, so, sorry, one more time. For example, for the Planning Board, there's four positions
that I've done while serving on both of those committees.
If you attend arts and culture events in Littleton, please tell us which ones and why. If you attend arts and culture events in Littleton, please tell us which ones and why. If you attend arts and culture events in Littleton, please tell us which ones and why. open, so we're going to chat you.
Give me four names.
Okay.
Yes.
Does it matter what order they're in?
So, Town Hall, I've attended a lot of the art openings that are there. I've attended So, Town Hall, I've attended a lot of the art openings that are there. I've attended So, Town Hall, I've attended a lot of the art openings that are there. I've attended
It does not, because remember, we're doing a tally, so they're gonna get little hash marks next to their name.
some of the gallery walks that are there, and some of the music that has happened in some of the gallery walks that are there, and some of the music that has happened in some of the gallery walks that are there, and some of the music that has happened in
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay?
They wanna sit down?
Yep, just start rapid-fire in there, and I will go through and capture them.
downtown Littleton. And it's really being part of the community, right? So, for those downtown Littleton. And it's really being part of the community, right? So, for those downtown Littleton. And it's really being part of the community, right? So, for those of you that don't know, I actually met my husband doing theater. My bachelor's minor of you that don't know, I actually met my husband doing theater. My bachelor's minor of you that don't know, I actually met my husband doing theater. My bachelor's minor
So, I'm seeing, I'm seeing everybody else's names.
And you will, you will. Unfortunately, it's not secret.
is actually in performing arts. And so, my husband and I met doing theater back in is actually in performing arts. And so, my husband and I met doing theater back in is actually in performing arts. And so, my husband and I met doing theater back in the
I'm looking, I'm busy typing.
the Midwestern city where I was raised. And so, it's very much part of what we do the Midwestern city where I was raised. And so, it's very much part of what we do Midwestern city where I was raised. And so, it's very much part of what we do as, as part as, as part of being a couple and being active in the city of Littleton. So, it's, as, as part of being a couple and being active in the city of Littleton. So, it's,
All right. So, is there, we do hit the send, right?
of being a couple and being active in the city of Littleton. So, it's, it's part of it's part of who we are, I like to think. it's part of who we are, I like to think.
Yep.
who we are, I like to think.
Okay, there you go.
What art and cultural events would you like to see in Littleton that aren't currently offered? What art and cultural events would you like to see in Littleton that aren't currently offered? What art and cultural events would you like to see in Littleton that aren't currently offered?
And I will do this as quickly as possible, but I wanna make sure I'm catching, catching
We are offering so much, and I think that that's really a big part of the Littleton We are offering so much, and I think that that's really a big part of the Littleton We are offering so much, and I think that that's really a big part of the Littleton
all of them correctly.
Arts and Culture Commission is to bring all of that together. And so, what I would really Arts and Culture Commission is to bring all of that together. And so, what I would really Arts and Culture Commission is to bring all of that together. And so, what I would really like to see moving forward is if we have an art show, then the ballet company performs, like to see moving forward is if we have an art show, then the ballet company performs, like to see moving forward is if we have an art show, then the ballet company performs, or if we have a theater production, then there's art in the lobby, which I know we or if we have a theater production, then there's art in the lobby, which I know we or if we have a theater production, then there's art in the lobby, which I know we do at Town Hall. But to really layer on top of those, so one activity would behoove another do at Town Hall. But to really layer on top of those, so one activity would behoove another do at Town Hall. But to really layer on top of those, so one activity would behoove another activity that comes forward. activity that comes forward. activity that comes forward.
Jerry, Jerry, can you go on mute? I think there's some feedback on your side. Jerry, Jerry, can you go on mute? I think there's some feedback on your side. Jerry, Jerry, can you go on mute? I think there's some feedback on your side.
My phone decided to start talking. My phone decided to start talking. My phone decided to start talking.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. Yeah, yeah, thanks. Yeah, yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Well, it's just, it's taking what we already have in place and making Thank you. Well, it's just, it's taking what we already have in place and making Thank you. Well, it's just, it's taking what we already have in place and making the community aware of that. And then whenever there is a production, so let's say it's the community aware of that. And then whenever there is a production, so let's say it's the community aware of that. And then whenever there is a production, so let's say it's our, our, our symphony, our harmonic, that there's actually art and maybe dance together with our, our symphony, our harmonic, that there's actually art and maybe dance together with our symphony, our harmonic, that there's actually art and maybe dance together with it. So, I really wanna see what we currently have in place kind of layered on top of each it. So, I really wanna see what we currently have in place kind of layered on top of each it. So, I really wanna see what we currently have in place kind of layered on top of each other. So, when, when somebody attends one cultural event, whether it's music or theater other. So, when, when somebody attends one cultural event, whether it's music or theater other. So, when, when somebody attends one cultural event, whether it's music or theater or visual arts, they, we have multiple events going on at the same time, or multiple exposure or visual arts, they, we have multiple events going on at the same time, or multiple exposure or visual arts, they, we have multiple events going on at the same time, or multiple exposure to what we already have in place, because we have a lot. to what we already have in place, because we have a lot. to what we already have in place, because we have a lot.
Agreed, agreed. So, what are most, what are the most important ways that arts and Agreed, agreed. So, what are most, what are the most important ways that arts and Agreed, agreed. So, what are most, what are the most important ways that arts and culture should connect with the community? culture should connect with the community? culture should connect with the community?
You know, I really think it's bringing what everybody is currently doing. So, you You know, I really think it's bringing what everybody is currently doing. So, you You know, I really think it's bringing what everybody is currently doing. So, you know, a good example is ACC may have an art show, but the rest, they've only communicated know, a good example is ACC may have an art show, but the rest, they've only communicated know, a good example is ACC may have an art show, but the rest, they've only communicated it with, within ACC. And so, it's really taking the communication and taking it out it with, with, in ACC. And so, it's really taking the communication and taking it out it with, within ACC. And so, it's really taking the communication and taking it out to the city. So, everybody knows that that's going on. A lot of people don't even know to the city. So, everybody knows that that's going on. A lot of people don't even know to the city. So, everybody knows that that's going on. A lot of people don't even know that the museum exists. And so, it's really that marketing and, you know, advertisement, that the museum exists. And so, it's really that marketing and, you know, advertisement, that the museum exists. And so, it's really that marketing and, you know, advertisement, if you will, but really generating the excitement of what we already have in place. So, I'd if you will, but really generating the excitement of what we already have in place. So, I'd if you will, but really generating the excitement of what we already have in place. So, I'd really really like to see an uptick in communication, an uptick in bringing all of those things really like to see an uptick in communication, an uptick in bringing all of those things like to see an uptick in communication, an uptick in bringing all of those things together, together, which I really feel is a cornerstone of the Arts and Culture Commission, is bringing together, which I really feel is a cornerstone of the Arts and Culture Commission, is bringing which I really feel is a cornerstone of the Arts and Culture Commission, is bringing all of those in one central place. So, everybody's like, oh, the Littleton Arts and Culture all of those in one central place. So, everybody's like, oh, the Littleton Arts and Culture all of those in one central place. So, everybody's like, oh, the Littleton Arts and Culture Commission, dance, music, theater, visual arts, you know, what, pottery, all of the Commission, dance, music, theater, visual arts, you know, what, pottery, all of the Commission, dance, music, theater, visual arts, you know, what, pottery, all of the different things that it falls under this umbrella of art and culture within our community. different things that it falls under this umbrella of art and culture within our community. different things that it falls under this umbrella of art and culture within our community. I'm sorry, I may be a little passionate, so. I'm sorry, I may be a little passionate, so. I'm sorry, I may be a little passionate, so.
I love the passion, and we have a little bit of time, so go for it. What do you think I love the passion, and we have a little bit of time, so go for it. What do you think I love the passion, and we have a little bit of time, so go for it. What do you think makes an art and cultural program event fun, engaging, or successful? makes an art and cultural program event fun, engaging, or successful? makes an art and cultural program event fun, engaging, or successful?
Yeah, I really think it's the excitement of the community itself, right? So, you see Yeah, I really think it's the excitement of the community itself, right? So, you see Yeah, I really think it's the excitement of the community itself, right? So, you see a lot of that in the activities that we already do. You know, a good example is Western Welcome a lot of that in the activities that we already do. You know, a good example is Western Welcome a lot of that in the activities that we already do. You know, a good example is Western Welcome Week. I mean, that's been around for over 50 years, I think. And so, the excitement Week. I mean, that's been around for over 50 years, I think. And so, the excitement Week. I mean, that's been around for over 50 years, I think. And so, the excitement that's generated about that is contagious. And so, I'd like to see that contagion, probably that's generated about that is contagious. And so, I'd like to see that contagion, probably that's generated about that is contagious. And so, I'd like to see that contagion, probably a bad time in our lives to use that word, but I'd like to see that excitement around a bad time in our lives to use that word, but I'd like to see that excitement around a bad time in our lives to use that word, but I'd like to see that excitement around the arts and culture. And so, the best way to get the word out is by word of mouth, especially the arts and culture. And so, the best way to get the word out is by word of mouth, the arts and culture. And so, the best way to get the word out is by word of mouth, especially in our community, and I think you guys all know that. So, we talk to our especially in our community, and I think you guys all know that. So, we talk to our in our community, and I think you guys all know that. So, we talk to our neighbors, we neighbors, we talk to our friends, we're in the coffee shop downtown, or, you know, neighbors, we talk to our friends, we're in the coffee shop downtown, or, you know, talk to our friends, we're in the coffee shop downtown, or, you know, one of the coffee one of the coffee shops in our community, and it's like, hey, did you know this was one of the coffee shops in our community, and it's like, hey, did you know this was shops in our community, and it's like, hey, did you know this was going on? That's what going on? That's what generates the excitement and the support for the activities. And it going on? That's what generates the excitement and the support for the activities. And it generates the excitement and the support for the activities. And it isn't just the, isn't just the, hey, are you gonna attend? It's also the financial support. So, the isn't just the, hey, are you gonna attend? It's also the financial support. So, the more hey, are you gonna attend? It's also the financial support. So, the more that we can more that we can financially support these institutions that are already in place, the that we can financially support these institutions that are already in place, the more that financially support these institutions that are already in place, the more that we can more that we can bring people outside of our community, which again generates revenue. we can bring people outside of our community, which again generates revenue. bring people outside of our community, which again generates revenue.
Yep. How do you, do you have any ideas about how to make the arts and culture accessible Yep. How do you, do you have any ideas about how to make the arts and culture accessible Yep. How do you, do you have any ideas about how to make the arts and culture accessible to everyone? to everyone? to everyone?
I do. So, there are some communities that are already doing this quite well. So, I do. So, there are some communities that are already doing this quite well. So, I do. So, there are some communities that are already doing this quite well. So, Boulder, I think, is a good comparison, Loveland is a good comparison, Breckenridge. And then Boulder, I think, is a good comparison, Loveland is a good comparison, Breckenridge. And then Boulder, I think, is a good comparison, Loveland is a good comparison, Breckenridge. And then as you start to go outside of the community, a lot of our Midwestern cities are really as you start to go outside of the community, a lot of our Midwestern cities are really as you start to go outside of the community, a lot of our Midwestern cities are really doing some bang-up stuff with arts and culture. Grand Rapids, Michigan has Art Prize. They're doing some bang-up stuff with arts and culture. Grand Rapids, Michigan has Art Prize. They're doing some bang-up stuff with arts and culture. Grand Rapids, Michigan has Art Prize. They're doing art installations in the middle of the river. And so, there's actually sculpture doing art installations in the middle of the river. And so, there's actually sculpture doing art installations in the middle of the river. And so, there's actually sculpture in the middle of the river, and the whole community supports that. You have Kansas in the middle of the river, and the whole community supports that. You have Kansas in the middle of the river, and the whole community supports that. You have Kansas City, Missouri, and their Art Walk in their community, which really is, is above and beyond City, Missouri, and their Art Walk in their community, which really is, is above and City, Missouri, and their Art Walk in their community, which really is, is above and beyond what's going on in Santa Fe, in Denver, Colorado. So, the Santa Fe Art Walk. So, beyond what's going on in Santa Fe, in Denver, Colorado. So, the Santa Fe Art Walk. So, what's going on in Santa Fe, in Denver, Colorado. So, the Santa Fe Art Walk. So, I think we I think we can do our own thing with our own flavor and kind of take ideas from other I think we can do our own thing with our own flavor and kind of take ideas from other can do our own thing with our own flavor and kind of take ideas from other cities, but cities, but put our mark on it. And by doing that with marketing, with, with excitement, cities, but put our mark on it. And by doing that with marketing, with, with excitement, put our mark on it. And by doing that with marketing, with, with excitement, but also but also with the, what do I say, the purpose of generating revenue for the community, but also with the, what do I say, the purpose of generating revenue for the community, with the, what do I say, the purpose of generating revenue for the community, generating generating revenue for our retail outlets, generating revenue for the artists. So, the generating revenue for our retail outlets, generating revenue for the artists. So, the revenue for our retail outlets, generating revenue for the artists. So, the more that more that we can generate that and get the excitement in, those are the ideas that I more that we can generate that and get the excitement in, those are the ideas that I we can generate that and get the excitement in, those are the ideas that I have for this have for this Arts and Culture Commission. have for this Arts and Culture Commission. Arts and Culture Commission.
Excellent. How do you, you've answered this, but I'll ask it, if there's anything Excellent. How do you, you've answered this, but I'll ask it, if there's anything Excellent. How do you, you've answered this, but I'll ask it, if there's anything more you wanna add. How do you think arts can support businesses in Littleton? more you wanna add. How do you think arts can support businesses in Littleton? more you wanna add. How do you think arts can support businesses in Littleton?
They can support the businesses in Littleton by bringing people from the outside They can support the businesses in Littleton by bringing people from the outside They can support the businesses in Littleton by bringing people from the outside in, right? So, once we kind of put our mark, and a really good example is the Santa Fe in, right? So, once we kind of put our mark, and a really good example is the Santa Fe in, right? So, once we kind of put our mark, and a really good example is the Santa Fe Arts District in Denver. I mean, they shut down streets every Friday, every restaurant Arts District in Denver. I mean, they shut down streets every Friday, every restaurant Arts District in Denver. I mean, they shut down streets every Friday, every restaurant is booked, it's an hour and a half wait, I know that personally. So, an hour and a half is booked, it's an hour and a half wait, I know that personally. So, an hour and a is booked, it's an hour and a half wait, I know that personally. So, an hour and a half wait, every bar is an hour and a half wait, standing room only. And then you have half wait, every bar is an hour and a half wait, standing room only. And then you have wait, every bar is an hour and a half wait, standing room only. And then you have your your retail shops, right? And so, if you're not buying art, then you're buying a little, your retail shops, right? And so, if you're not buying art, then you're buying a little, retail shops, right? And so, if you're not buying art, then you're buying a little, you you know, trinket here, and you have your kids, and maybe you're buying from one of you know, trinket here, and you have your kids, and maybe you're buying from one of know, trinket here, and you have your kids, and maybe you're buying from one of the street the street vendors, so you're buying maybe an artistic mask, or, you know, a little the street vendors, so you're buying maybe an artistic mask, or, you know, a little toy vendors, so you're buying maybe an artistic mask, or, you know, a little toy that the toy that the kids can have. All of that is revenue into our city, right? We're all taxing that the kids can have. All of that is revenue into our city, right? We're all taxing that kids can have. All of that is revenue into our city, right? We're all taxing that sale. that sale. And so, that's how we can support it. If we think of the stuff that we already sale. And so, that's how we can support it. If we think of the stuff that we already And so, that's how we can support it. If we think of the stuff that we already have have going on, you know, you think of Santa going down Main Street, that's a good boom have going on, you know, you think of Santa going down Main Street, that's a good boom going on, you know, you think of Santa going down Main Street, that's a good boom for for our community. So, instead of Santa, we're gonna have art. And so, and we have for our community. So, instead of Santa, we're gonna have art. And so, and we have our community. So, instead of Santa, we're gonna have art. And so, and we have plenty plenty of room for dance and theater and vocal, right? And so, I really like the idea plenty of room for dance and theater and vocal, right? And so, I really like the idea of room for dance and theater and vocal, right? And so, I really like the idea of, of, you know, musicians performing while we're looking at visual and performing arts. of, you know, musicians performing while we're looking at visual and performing arts. you know, musicians performing while we're looking at visual and performing arts.
And I am looking forward to asking you this final question. Would you be comfortable And I am looking forward to asking you this final question. Would you be comfortable And I am looking forward to asking you this final question. Would you be comfortable serving as an ambassador and advocate for arts and culture in Littleton? serving as an ambassador and advocate for arts and culture in Littleton? serving as an ambassador and advocate for arts and culture in Littleton?
Absolutely. Yep, absolutely, hands down. Absolutely. Yep, absolutely, hands down. Absolutely. Yep, absolutely, hands down.
All right. Excellent. Thank you so much, Kate. All right. Excellent. Thank you so much, Kate. All right. Excellent. Thank you so much, Kate.
Absolutely. Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you.
Jerry, hand me the. Jerry, handing it over. Jerry, handing it over.
Thank you.
Okay, good night, everybody, have a good one. Thank you. Okay, good night, everybody, have a good one. Thank you. Okay, good night, everybody, have a good one. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate, for joining us. Thank you, Kate, for joining us. Thank you, Kate, for joining us.
Absolutely. Thank you for your time. Absolutely. Thank you for your time. Absolutely. Thank you for your time.
Yes, have a good night. Yes, have a good night. Yes, have a good night. All right. That is all of our applicants. We made it through. Do, Council, do you need All right. That is all of our applicants. We made it through. Do, Council, do you need All right. That is all of our applicants. We made it through. Do, Council, do you need more time to work on this? more time to work on this? more time to work on this?
Now, can I have a five-minute bio break? Now, can I have a five-minute bio break? Now, can I have a five-minute bio break?
Sure. Other than just taking a regular five-minute break, does anybody need more Sure. Other than just taking a regular five-minute break, does anybody need more Sure. Other than just taking a regular five-minute break, does anybody need more time though to work on their selections? I hope not. Okay, so it is 7:41. Should we time though to work on their selections? I hope not. Okay, so it is 7:41. Should we time though to work on their selections? I hope not. Okay, so it is 7:41. Should we come back at 7:45? Does that work for you right now? Oh, all right, 7:45. come back at 7:45? Does that work for you right now? Oh, all right, 7:45. come back at 7:45? Does that work for you right now? Oh, all right, 7:45.
Mayor, I'm gonna take a quick break as well. Mayor, I'm gonna take a quick break as well. Mayor, I'm gonna take a quick break as well.
Ah, geez, city clerks just aren't what they used to be. Ah, geez, city clerks just aren't what they used to be. Ah, geez, city clerks just aren't what they used to be.
No. 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 I'll be right back. I'll be right back. I'll be right back.
All right, bye-bye. All right, bye-bye. All right, bye-bye. All right, bye-bye. All right. 7:45.
Ready to go.
Let's do it. Okay. We have Kelly and Karina and Carol. Are we all back? There's Kelly.
Carol.
And Karina.
And Patrick.
Karina's the only one I see that is not live on my screen. Here comes Karina. There she is. Ah, okay, cool. All righty. So as we get going, Colleen, did you want to say anything? Let me say this first, as you go through the process for us, if you will. But first, I'm thinking, Council, as we start to appoint folks, do we want to just consider all at once? Are there any reappoints that would not be reappointed? I'm not asking for that right now. But I think that might be a good place to start. That eliminates a lot of positions. And then at some point, then as we go through each Board or Commission, we'll decide whether to move folks from alternate to regular. All right, Colleen?
I don't know. Can we just vote who we want to vote for rather than Alstine somebody?
Well, I think for the reappoints, it's important that we do recognize that they are reappointments.
I think we can recognize that with our vote, though.
What?
I agree with Pam. I don't think it needs to be a separate step.
You want to go ahead?
Who we think are the best candidates.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, we can do it that way. All right, Colleen, did you have anything you want to add?
No, I think I added everything earlier this evening on one of our breaks. So just a quick reminder that we're going to use the chat feature for this, since we're not in a room together where you can hand me your little slip of paper. And so we're going to go through these in order, as established earlier today, starting with the Planning Commission, then on to Election Commission, Transportation and Mobility, Licensing, Historical Preservation, South Metro Housing, Arts and Culture, Next Gen, Fine Arts Board, Board of Adjustment, and finally Building Board of Appeals. And yes, Karina, I got your message. Thank you. And so what we will do is we will look at each board, look at the number of vacancies. For instance, Planning Commission is our first board. We technically have four vacancies. So I would need each council member to provide me four names. And then we will tally names and whoever gets the most votes. If it happens to be someone who's a reappoint, that's awesome. If not, we'll go on to the next one and so on until we have filled our positions. If we have anyone who is an alternate, we will look at whether or not we want to move them up to a regular position. And then that fourth position would be filled as an alternate, so.
Okay, so sorry, one more time. For example, for the Planning Board, there's four positions open, so we're going to
Give me four names.
Okay.
Yes.
Does it matter what order they're in?
It does not, because remember, we're doing a tally. So they're going to get little hash marks next to their name. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay?
They want us to do that?
Yep, just start rapid fire in there and I will go through and capture them.
So I'm seeing, I'm seeing everybody else's names.
And you will, you will. Unfortunately, it's not secret.
I'm looking, I'm busy typing. All right. So is there, we do hit the send, right?
Yep.
Okay, there you go.
And I will do this as quickly as possible, but I want to make sure I'm catching all of them correctly.
All right, is everybody submitted?
They have, and I'm just counting up my last one, Mayor.
Great.
Yeah, just, Kelly, I see you have Lauren Akers on there, but I think she pulled her got off of that, went to a different one, just applied.
No, she was Planning Commission.
Oh, she was Planning Commission?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Her choice then, Schmoe was her second choice.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay.
Okay. We have both Craig Coronado and Dan Miller received seven votes. So they would obviously be reapplied. They would be reappointed. And then we actually have a four-way tie with three votes each for the following candidates. Lauren Akers received three votes. Sherri Almond received three votes. Furman Avila received three votes, and Dave McFadden has three votes. So now we have two positions to fill between those four people. Mayor, is this where we may want to have some discussion?
We can, or let's just go to a vote and see if we need to do it again. So we have four people. It was Amon, McFadden, Akers, and who was the other?
Furman Avila.
Furman Avila.
Mm-hmm. But so now I need
You needed two.
Two between those four.
Gotcha. All right, let's do it. Jesus. You got mine.
Yep, give me just a minute. Barrera was not one of them, Pat.
Okay. Who was, who was the?
Lauren Akers, Sherri Almond, Furman Avila, or Dave McFadden? I need two names, Pat.
Well, I sent you the other one, but I'll do it again.
Did you?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. Almond and Avila, thank you. My apologies. Okay, after that, we have four votes. Lauren Akers has three votes. Sherri Almond has four. Furman Avila has three, and Dave McFadden has four.
So we're moving in.
So Sherri Almond would be reappointed. Do we want to move her from alternate one to a regular? Correct?
Yeah, that's the question. We move her to regular, and Bazad would move to alt-
Alternate one, and then Dave McFadden would become alternate two.
So I thought we only, I thought, I'm sorry. I thought we only have four positions. What, it sounds like we just ended up with five.
No, we have four. And I'm going to put it up on the screen here in just a minute, Karina.
Bazad, he's serving as alt one, so he moves to alt two, so he's moving alt one is all.
So
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so Karina, we've Craig Coronado and Dan Miller were unanimous, and then we just did a countoff and ended up with Sherri Almond and Dave McFadden.
And Sherri moves to regular and Bazad moves to one and McFadden is two.
Yeah, okay. Correct. And so I am going to very quickly share my screen. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Yeah.
So Dan Miller would be appointed to a term ending in 2024. Craig Coronado ending in 2024. Sherri Almond moves to regular in 2024. Bazad goes to alternate one, and Dave McFadden becomes alternate two.
Correct.
Correct?
Yes.
That's what I have.
Nice job.
Going to take my screen down.
All right.
One down.
All right, so
Okay, Election Commission, we have one vacancy. So I just need each of you to submit one name, please.
So sorry to throw a wrench. There was a possibility we would have two, because Jace requested to come off if he gets appointed someplace.
We may have to come back to that.
Yeah.
Okay.
He doesn't have to. He can serve on two boards, right?
It's our decision.
Yeah, and the Election Commission doesn't meet that often. It's as needed.
He was up for Next Gen, too.
So who am I missing?
I'm in.
He was up for Next Gen.
Okay. So we have two votes for Frank Atwood, two for Brian Gibson, and the other three are for Emily McCormick Kraus.
So we have a two-way?
No, we only have one position. And Emily got the most votes.
Tie.
Yeah, but the tie doesn't matter because we only have one position, and Emily got three votes.
Oh, did we, oh, we did have a three. Okay.
Yes.
Gotcha.
So let me
Gotcha.
All right, now on Transportation.
This one. Since this is only one, do you need me to share my screen or?
No.
Okay.
If it's Emily, if that's
I want everyone to be comfortable. I am going to dog ear this page, though, and highlight Jace just in case.
But he can serve on two boards.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
All right, it's now Transportation.
We are on to TMB. And so we have three vacancies, two of which have reapplied. So I need three names, please.
Elliot Barr was not on your list, but he was added, correct?
Yeah, he is added.
Okay, good.
Is there anything, is there anything special about people living outside of Littleton or?
For TMB, they are allowed to.
Okay.
Yes. Kelly, you only, oh, there's your other two. Thank you.
So we're doing, let's see, we're doing three on this one, right?
We're doing three. And Kelly, you put Bailey on yours. I'm guessing you meant Bagley.
Oh, spelling counts here.
Sorry, I was on mute. Yes, I did do that.
Okay.
We waited for you to get off mute that long for you to tell us you were on mute.
I'm tired, Jerry, I'm tired.
I hear you.
Okay, Kelly Honnaker has five votes by far the most. So Kelly would be reappointed. The next most votes is three for Elliot Barrera. Let me go back and look at something here, though. And then three for Kent Bagley. Then the others are one and two, so Kent Bagley. We have the three.
Honnaker, Bagley.
And Elliot Barrera.
Um, Colleen, I think there's two votes for Stephanie Kelly, right?
Yeah, but that's only two. The others have three.
Gotcha.
So there's, there's three.
Were there? Did I miss one?
Me, Kelly, and Jerry.
Yep, you're right. So we do have a, I'm sorry, my apologies. So we do have a three-way tie then.
Bagley, Barrera, and Kelly?
And Kelly, so I need two names.
Okay.
Thank you.
You need two names.
Between Bagley, Barrera, and Kelly.
Stephanie Kelly or Kelly Honnaker?
Stephanie Kelly.
Stephanie Kelly.
I'm just putting in last names unless
Yeah, I prefer last names.
Okay.
That's all I need is a last name.
So it's between, say this again, sorry about that.
That's okay. Kent Bagley, Elliot Barrera, and Stephanie Kelly. And I just need last names.
This is going better than usual.
It helps to be very prepared.
Don't I have it from? I got Kelly's, I got Pat's, I got Carol's, Jerry's, Pam's, Scott's, Karina.
It's coming. I'm sorry. It's two, right?
I need two between Bagley Barrera and Stephanie Kelly.
Bagley Barrera and Stephanie Kelly.
I need two. Thank you. So now we have Kent Bagley and Stephanie Kelly.
Serious? Sorry.
Now we have to go between two more?
No.
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 That's it.
We only had two left.
Okay.
So so Stephanie
Oh, sorry.
Stephanie Kelly will take the alternate two place vacated by Chris Lilly, who did not reapply.
Yes.
Okay.
Licensing.
Hey. So that was relatively easy. This is going much quicker than I thought it would. Licensing authority. Y'all are on it.
We have three. One is a replacement, so they get a short term.
So we do have three vacancies on the licensing authority. We have one that's a reapply. So I need three names for the licensing authority, please.
You got it.
And just last names, please.
Sorry, I typed it all out before you said that.
That's awesome. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm laughing, but I'm going to go back and count these.
Pat, you're hilarious.
He doesn't even know he made a typo.
I love it. It makes me so happy.
What'd you do, Scott? I can't see.
It makes me so happy.
And then there's Karina putting in, throwing in the French name. You know, Fat Tuesday. I was thinking of you, Kelly.
Can't even blame it on autocorrect.
Yeah, that's funny.
Okay, so we have six votes for Pete McClintock, five for Michael Buchanan, thank you, I wouldn't want to lose him off my board, and five for Scott Primo. Is that how we pronounce his last name?
Primo.
Brian Evil.
Primo.
Brian Evil.
Wait, we went with him, okay.
Okay, so that's, that's pretty easy then. So Michael is reappointed to 2024. Pete McClintock actually got the most votes. So are we going to put him in the replacement seat for Pete Webb?
Uh, let's see, I have him as replacement.
Yeah.
That's what I have.
So we would
Wait, wait, so Pete got the most, you said?
He did.
So, but I think McClintock and Pete should have the most available date with Karina. I'm sorry, what's that, Kelly?
It's the same person. It's McClintock?
Yeah, yeah, McClintock, he should be
A regular position.
Yeah, the full term.
Well, but Michael Buchanan has a full term.
Oh, but he's
Because he's a reappointment.
Oh, so he's, he's being, okay, but he's being demoted to the alt one then?
No, no one's going to alt one. We could put Pete McClintock in the position vacated by Peter Webb.
Yes.
That ends next year, or in 2023.
Right.
So he did a two-year term.
Well, wait a second. Should we move up an alternate?
Well, just a minute, we're not there yet.
All right.
I mean, we could, we could pull Jothi up.
I advocate putting the alternates up and putting a new applicant in on an alternate.
Yeah, I have
Who got the most votes, Colleen, please?
Uh, Pete McClintock did.
Okay, so
Give us the numbers if you will.
Pete got six. Michael Buchanan got five, and Scott Primo got five, I believe. Let me go back and recount. One, two, three. Yeah.
My recommendation is Michael stays where he's at. Alternate one moves up. Alternate two moves to one, and our Pete, Pete goes to
Alternate two.
Yes.
No, no. Pete got more votes than Primo though.
Right, but Primo's not in the conversation anymore, Jerry.
Primo, the word is Primo. Where's he going?
He goes to two.
Alternate two.
So can we start with one? I'm sorry, can we please start with the one that got the most votes?
And Pete goes
Okay, Michael Buchanan stays where he's at. He's a regular. Alternate one moves up. Alternate two moves to one. Scott moves to alternate two.
So I just recounted, Michael Buchanan and Pete McClintock both got six votes. So Michael is a reapplication.
Yeah, let's, so let's leave him as a, as a regular.
Okay.
And Pete would get
Well, we should probably move our alternate one up.
Yeah.
So alt one, and that's that, that Redana, whatever?
Jothi Ravindran.
Goes to, to regular.
Uh-huh. And then
So McClintock then becomes alt one.
Right, and then Scott Primo becomes alt two.
No, Andrea Peters becomes alt one.
Andrea Peters, no, Andrea Peters.
All moves up, you're right, you're right.
No, she didn't reapply. She's not in the game.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so, got it.
Okay, here, let me, let me do my page and pull it up for you so that we make sure we're on the same page. Except for I think my mouse is not cooperating with me. And then one of those alternate positions will actually be completing Pete's term to 2023. And one would be a full term. So we want to give Pete the full term, correct?
Yes.
If he has the most votes.
McLintock? Yes.
Right.
You know, this is better than being in the same room, because I, in some years, there are so many huge heated arguments over You know, this is better than being in the same room, because I, in some years, there are so many huge heated arguments over who gets in and who doesn't. So this is going a lot smoother.
Well, and I appreciate your patience. I really appreciate your patience with all of this.
Oh, you're a great job. Appreciate it.
I know it's, it's, um, different. Okay, um, let me share my screen on this one. So I show that Michael Buchanan is reappointed through 2024. Jothi will move up to a regular position. Pete McClintock will have a full term through 2024 as alternate one, and Scott Primo will take the remainder of Pete Webb's term through 2023 as alternate two.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Looks good.
You have, you have Jothi as alternate one here.
Well, that was her original status. If you look over to the right where it says appointed and term, that's where we're making the changes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. That is four down, guys. Historical Preservation Board, uh, four vacancies. And. So I'm gonna need four names.
But the thing about this here is Andy Hill and Dustin, this is their second choice.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's whatever we decide at this point.
Okay, I, I'm gonna honor their first choices, so I'm only gonna give you two names.
Okay.
So we may end up with vacant alternates, and if that's the case, then.
Yeah, that, and that's what I'm thinking.
Then we can come back later.
Okay, so are you ready?
I am. They're coming in fast and furious. Where did Jason Henderson come from?
I put it on there. Is that, you mean who, who? I did that.
Just for the heck of it?
No, because I, he said.
I added somebody too.
He said he's willing to.
Can we do that in the second round? Hold on, can we do that in the second round, when we come back to where boards need to be filled, if we don't fill them with the initial four?
I, I think that's a good idea, Karina.
Because we may, Ralph, please? That was the, I think, the initial intent and instructions per Colleen and Jerry.
And Pat Geddes. Geddes would just move up. She's not, she's already a member.
Oh, I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, she would go from alt one to reg.
Mm-hmm. And then we, we're essentially gonna have to fill two alternate positions at some point. Um.
Well, we gotta fill, we gotta fill a total of four.
We do.
But it's just how many, how many votes you get right now is gonna matter.
Right, so, um. So I think it would be easier. I agree with Karina on this, that it'd be easier to, to fill the first. Two and then come back.
Well, let's just take a vote and, and decide what happens. Actually, because I.
I'm not good with that.
I, I think for sure we have to fill, there should be enough names to fill three. But it sounds like others have somebody from another area.
Well, and I think one of the big concerns, um, with Andy is that Shmo was her first choice, and I don't know.
But, and, and my concern with, since we're gonna talk about it, is the Historic Preservation is already light on applicants, and she's a good one for the Historic Preservation.
Mm-hmm.
But we did lose some, we already started with some good ones in other boards, and, um, you know, maybe I'll take back my third, and I'm, I'll just go with my first two, which is Paige Alcorn, Laura, and Gabriel, and then look back at who we may not have been able to place in other boards that might serve well on the HPV as well.
So what do we, what do we have?
Andy gets her first choice of Shmo. She doesn't, then we can put HPV easily.
That's a good idea.
All right, all right.
Colleen.
You wanna go to Shmo then?
Yeah.
Because Shmo's up next anyway.
What, we wanna just switch positions?
I think so.
Okay, let's do Shmo.
Go to, go to Shmo?
Yeah.
What, so what are we doing, Colleen?
So with Shmo, we're gonna go ahead and, and fill Shmo, um, and then we'll go back to HPV.
All right, so disregard HPV.
I'm sorry?
Disregard HPV. We're jumping to, uh.
Shmo, we're just gonna switch them.
Exactly. We'll go back to the other one.
We'll go back to HPV right after this. Um, so we have two vacancies on Shmo.
So I'd like to make a comment here. Um, Lauren Akers, uh, she was, um, she applied to planning first and Shmo second, and she has a very strong, um, commercial development, um, background, which is very helpful. It was unfortunate we couldn't get her on planning, but those types of skills are very applicable here. So even though it was her second choice here, I think her background and her strength, um, warrants an opportunity on one of these boards.
And, and Karina, you can certainly throw her name in the mix as one of your two choices.
Yeah, well. I voted.
Can I? Potentially qualified. Can I?
I, I would like to determine if we're going to do campaigning for candidates or not at this point. I say no.
For candidates.
I wasn't campaigning.
Yes, you were, Karina. You were campaigning for candidates.
Let's try to get one person talking here. So Scott, you were saying?
Well. I don't think it's, I don't think it's at all out of bounds to campaign for people. Um, I.
We can discuss.
I, um.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Procedurally, are we discussing now? Is that part of our thing?
Yes, yes.
We haven't even voted yet, and so we're discussing?
We're, 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 we have members that wanna discuss, yes.
I think we should vote and then discuss if we have.
I agree.
I've, I've already voted, so.
Okay, let's all vote.
I think we can be flexible.
Yes, and we talked about being flexible from the beginning. Um, Jerry could say.
Wait a minute. If, if we be flexible, then we don't have an agenda or a procedure. That means the person who's willing to interrupt the most rules, Karina.
Okay, this is Jerry that's gonna step in. This is Jerry that's gonna step in. Let's, we, we have some members that do wanna talk, so let's let them talk. Uh, we'll, we'll start with Scott. I know, Scott, you keep trying to say something, so go ahead, Scott.
No, I think I made my point. Uh, I just, I, I don't think we need to be so rigid as that. I mean, we're a deliberative body. There's no reason we ought not deliberate. It's perfectly in bounds to talk about things on these boards. Otherwise, what's the point?
Exactly. Yeah, I get. Patrick, did you have something to say?
Yeah, you know, I, I, I think we should take our vote, and again, if there's a tie, then, then we can have that discussion. But to, to campaign for somebody before we even vote, I, I don't think it's worth the time.
And Kelly, did you wanna add anything?
Um, no, I agree with Scott. I think it's okay right now to be able to talk about these candidates before. It's. It's, I think it's fine to do that. I think it's actually educational and informative.
Ma'am?
Um. It doesn't bother me, but why don't we go ahead and vote and then discuss afterwards if necessary?
All right. Karina, I know where you are, so.
Um, let's see if I have everyone.
All right.
Carol, did you vote?
I am for voting.
Okay, did you give me two names, please?
This is the part where people start throwing stuff at each other in a room.
We do not throw things.
Yeah, so we gotta.
Virtually. So what do we, what do we have?
Okay, so, uh, it looks like all seven of you want Peterson.
Okay.
So that's a given. Um. And then there are three votes for Lauren Akers and three votes for Andy Hill. I'm gonna go back and just check that. Yeah, so three and three. So we need to vote between Andy and Lauren for the last position.
So it's Hill and Akers, Hill and Akers, right?
Andy Hill and Lauren Akers, correct.
Can we?
You want last names. If you want last names.
Pam wants, Pam wants to have some.
Can we talk?
Okay.
Um, I've worked on, with Andy Hill on HPV, and she is excellent. She's a good thinker. She's a good team member. She's very thoughtful. She's very knowledgeable. Lauren is too. It's just, I have personally been on a board with Andy.
I think Karina made a good point that we have room for both of them. If Lauren goes on this board, then Andy can go on Historic Preservation and continue doing her good work there, if that's what council wants.
Yeah, and, and, and as far as Hill go, Andy Hill goes, that she's on Historic Preservation now, and we, and we need good people on there, and we're short candidates this year.
Yeah, and I think, given, given the work that we're doing in HPV right now, um, is so critical that we have that continuity and that skill set that someone like Andy brings, given her experience with DOLA. So it's, we're, we're at a huge risk at HPV if we don't have knowledgeable contributing members. So I, I, Andy Hill is definitely going to be a recommendation for me on HPV.
All right, so, so are, anybody else wanna add?
Did nobody look at our Gretchen Ryden? I mean, she's a social worker. She.
We have one, we had one vote for Gretchen.
I know, that was my one vote, since, but I'm trying.
Yeah, she didn't, she didn't make the cut.
Yeah, it's unfortunate you guys left her off the ballot, because she was excellent. Incredible.
Did you, were you there for the interview for that one, um, Pat?
Yeah.
It was last night. Yeah.
Yeah, she was awesome.
Now, if we can try to find some other way to get her involved with the city, because I agree with you, Pat. I think she's fantastic.
Yeah, I don't.
Fantastic.
So right now, we have Hill and Akers. That's what we're, we're considering. So, you want one, right?
I, I want one.
Yes, let's do it.
You convinced me.
Okay, that's five for Lauren. So, um, Lauren will fill the position vacated by Mike Madrid with a term in 2022.
Yes.
And Kate Peterson will take the full term vacated by Stu Maher.
That's what I have.
Okay. Awesome.
So we're, we're back to HP.
Back to HPV. And now Andy Hill is back in the mix. Uh, but I, I still need four names, but if all you wanna give me is three.
Yeah, I'm, I'm giving you three. That's where I am.
Let's, let's do three and then go back and do a fourth, if there's somebody that hasn't, a good person that hasn't found a spot.
Can we have some discussion around this ahead of the vote? Because I don't feel like I've got four names.
All right. Yeah, I only have three names. That's all I have myself.
The names are Alcon Gabriel, now Hill, and then Dustin Hubbard.
This is his second choice. He's on BBOA.
Perhaps we should follow a precedent, uh, and go to BBOA and see if we want Dustin on that, and, and see if he gets selected for that.
Counsel?
Okay, let, let's do that. That, that should, that should not be a difficult one to look at. Okay.
Okay, Building Board of Appeals. Carol, you may have just opened another can.
Yeah.
I know. Yeah.
Uh, we, we have four vacancies and three people interested.
Yeah.
We put the, at the end and move on to the next one. So can we move on to maybe like Fine Arts, Next Gen, or Arts and Culture, and then we'll put, we have B, HPV at the end, BBOA, because we have to find people to fill those.
Why don't we just, why don't we just make a decision and on whether it's two or three people on HP and just do it? If, if someone, if somebody doesn't get four votes, you know, then, then we would come back to it.
This way we see how many openings we've got.
Exactly.
One thing, I, 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 one thing I would really not like to do is, by accident, perhaps vote to put Dustin on. On HPV when he really wants BBOA.
Okay, so.
Why is it a problem to just put HPV, why can't we just table HPV for now and move on to others that don't have conflicts, and then we just come back at the end and recommend that?
We have to, we have to address it anyway. I'm okay with putting Hubbard on too. I, I don't have an issue with, because the, the other board isn't as active as the Historic Preservation.
And if we had to do a re-recruitment?
See, I think, well, for me, it would be nice to, I think we're to the point where we can open it up to people who said they're willing to serve on other boards. For example, for me, Jason Henderson makes sense for HPV.
What was the last part you said, Scott? I missed the last part you said.
I was just saying, for me, Jason Henderson makes sense for HPV.
But we haven't, we can only do that after we've gone through each.
Uh, Jason Henderson, okay.
And people are left out. So if people, we haven't even brought Jason in front of ACC yet, in order for us to decide whether he's in or not. Um, so I think that was, you know, why we go through each of them for the people that are listed before we're throwing in additional names out of respect for, um, those individuals that we did interview for those specific positions.
Can I make a recommendation that we do three names and that we save the fourth opening for later and come back to it?
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that too, three names. Let's just do three names for HP. We're talking HPV. Okay?
Okay, so if, if, if people have voted before, I apologize. I need you to vote again so I have them all in an order.
Yeah, let's, okay, let's vote now. I heard somebody cuss there.
Sorry, that's my bad. I really apologize. I thought I was muted. That's my bad.
That's okay.
Jerry Henderson's not even on the list for HPV.
You can put him in there if he wants.
Oh, I got you.
Uh, but my thought is let's do that later, because I also have a recommendation for somebody that said they would serve on another board.
Okay, well, I've already put him in. I'm, I'm still good with him being there myself. And he may not get the votes. That's what it is.
Okay, so Andy has seven votes. And Gabriel has seven votes.
Alcorn has six.
Yep.
Who, who has six?
Uh, Paige Alcorn.
Alcorn?
Yeah.
Correct.
So.
One opening later.
So Laura would be, uh, reappointed to 2024, Andy to 2024. Um. Do we wanna move Chris Geddes up from alternate one?
Yes.
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 And then we would put Paige in at alternate one.
Right now, we don't have a two.
Alternate two. Let me update this sheet real quick, because I think this one, um.
Okay. So we'll have to come back then eventually to this one.
We will, um. Okay, so we have alternate two is vacant on that board. And I'm gonna set that one aside.
Yes, but we got three out of the way there.
We did. Okay, uh, Arts and Culture. Okay, Arts and Culture Commission.
Arts and Culture.
Wait a minute. No, we took South Metro out of order, so it was fine.
Yeah, we we did South Metro.
Yeah. Just catching myself up here. Arts and Culture Commission, we have three vacancies.
Yes.
Now, Mayor, did you want to have the attendance discussion before?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I think we should.
Because that might create more vacancies.
It just may. So at this, looking at the attendance here, we have two things. There's Foley, who's three of eight, and Ranky, who's two of eight. Those are the two issues. You know, the the other one is four of eight. That's not great either.
He did not reapply.
Well, hell, that's right. He's didn't reapply anyway. Doesn't matter there. So we we have two, though, that are an issue.
Uh, who, uh, who besides Greg? Oh, Reagan.
Was that Monkey Foley?
Monica Foley.
Can I speak to both of those situations, please?
Sure.
So, um, both Monica and Greg, while they were not always present at the meetings, there were a lot of, um, meetings that amongst groups that happened outside of the meeting nights. In fact, both Monica representing the Aspen Grove and Greg representing Hoodlum really, um, allowed and contributed to some of the partnerships that happened with the other, um, organizations that are on here. So there was a lot of work that they were doing behind the scenes. I also know that Greg is 100% committed. One of the challenges for Greg is the Zoom access. He is not tech savvy. These these two that you see that he was there was that in person. And when he was in person, he will was brilliant. He brought forward some very interesting ideas. And he, um, and the group really appreciated his inputs. So I would say at this time, neither one of those, um, should be, um, replaced. I would like for them to continue in their roles and I will reach out to both of them. Okay.
I agree.
Thank you.
I agree, yeah.
All right, sounds like that's not an issue now.
Okay, so we have three vacancies.
Yes.
So I need three names. And please, just last names.
Let's see, let's see.
So what, uh, the other piece, can I share some other information? It may be pertinent to your decision making.
Even though I already voted.
I I I voted, yeah. I I know what three I want.
So, um, the chair, the new chair, the chair of the former museum and the chair of the former library will be putting together a task force. Their task force is for the certification process. And they will be sourcing from former museum and library board members, of which we have applicants from those as well. So there is an opportunity for those former museum and library board members to, um, still be able to serve on AC and C, um, A and CC, um, under a new, uh, under a subtask force.
Yeah, that sounds good. All right.
Auto correct. Hey, it's Kate's last name.
Okay.
All right.
I want to make sure I have everyone. Karina, did you vote?
I'm I'm trying to pick my third. It's a hard one for me.
All right, Karina. No pressure, Karina, but come on. Don't look at the names. You can't look at our vote.
I did.
Um, Kate Echol Kate Echol got seven votes.
All right.
So she is reappointed. Uh, Denise Weed got five votes. And the next most was Susan Thornton with four.
So we have Echo and Weed for sure and Thornton, you say?
Uh huh, because everybody else just had one or two.
So.
So you have Echo reappointed. You have Denise Weed.
And Thornton.
And Susan Thornton.
All right. We are down to Next Gen. Nothing complicated about this one.
Pam, was Fermin Avila under the age? I can't remember.
Fermin Avila.
Yeah.
Oh, hold on.
I hated myself for not taking a note on that.
What's his last name? Avila?
Uh huh.
Yeah.
What night was that person?
Uh, he was our first on Monday night.
First night.
Yeah.
Uh, I may have made a note, Scott.
You know, I didn't ask him. There was one person that told me that he was 29, and that was Greg Anderson. And I thought he'd be a really good candidate. Since now Paige is off the table because she's HPV, right?
Yeah, I don't have anything about Avila as far as his age.
So on on Next Gen, um,
Two years and one year.
We're filling two years and one years.
Should we do what we did before? We fill as many as we can, and then if there's openings, we go back? Like April during with HPV?
Well, and and we can, um, I was going to try and break it up.
So highest will get two years?
So we aren't doing eight names, but, um, and then Pam, you said you've been making notes on who would prefer to use versus one year?
Yes, um, we have three one years, right? Yeah.
Yeah. But this one is eight names. So.
Right.
So we just go ahead and put in our eight names, figure it out from there?
Yeah, and you're going to have to give me some time with this one.
Colleen, didn't you want to do five first to do those?
Pam, we want to do the five two years first and see if they line up.
We could do that, um. This is my thinking. Everybody said two years except for Stephen Barr, which is the first person. And then, if you remember, Molly was 36, so she could technically do a two-year term, but she would be 38, kind of at the high end.
Be aged out, so we would want to keep her at one year.
That's my thought. And then only because Stephen Barr said one or two, and then all the other people said, um.
They could do two.
Pam, uh, sorry, can you repeat that? Did Stephen say one or two or did he say?
One or two.
Okay, so he's open to either. Okay.
Okay, and so we have we have seven people who wanted this as their first choice. And then three that wanted it as their second.
But Paige is off the table.
Okay.
Paige is off the table because she's HPV. Beth Michaels was too old. And so was Brandon Addison.
Was Greg Anderson an okay age?
Yeah, he was 29, but he's an addition and we're gonna, we said we were going to do that later.
Pat? Pat, on yours, you put General. Who is that?
Uh, wasn't supposed to be General, supposed to be Gerber.
That's what I needed.
It it I take Gerber and it comes over General.
Yeah, I I it's it's a auto correcting for you, so.
I have no idea. Hope line came out right. I only put in seven.
Okay, give me just a minute because there's a lot here.
I only put in seven, too.
I'll make it two.
Boy, oh my.
Putting in six.
Yeah, putting what you get.
I'm sorry, I've got this on two sides, so I have to keep flipping back and forth.
That's one of my recommendations, by the way, is one side.
Yeah. I'm getting there, guys. I apologize.
Yeah, take your time, Colleen. We haven't seen our families in a week, but that's okay. Take your time.
I'm getting there, I promise.
Okay, so be accurate, all you want.
And who is this Anderson that you put in, Karina?
Greg Anderson.
Okay, because he's not on the list, so I'm going to have to add him.
Yeah, and I would put him in, but I thought we were waiting till later to add. I would.
I did too.
Yeah, I thought.
It's okay. We can we can circle back.
Okay.
We can circle back. Okay. I think I'm there. Um, so Stephen Barr has seven. Lauren has six, Lauren Gieber. Jace has seven. Uh, Hannah has six. Suzie has seven, Molly has six. Those are our tops.
Can you say their last names?
I'm sorry, Barr, Barr, Gieber, Hopper, Kite, Lanners, and Luke. So, um, Pam, do you have recommendations out of those for the one years?
Yes, I would put Stephen as a one year because he said one or two years. And I would put Molly as one year due to her age.
That's Barr and Luke, right?
Barr and Luke, correct.
Barr and Luke.
And then, um, hopefully, we can get some other recommendations later, and then I would put those as one years.
So so.
Okay, but we only have one more. We only have one more one year.
One, two, three, four, five, six. No, we have eight openings, right?
Yes, but only three of them are one years.
Okay, so Barr would be a one year.
Luke would be a one year.
One year.
So then out out of Gieber, Hopper, Kite, Lanners, would any of those?
I would like to give those a two-year, and then if we find somebody else from another area, I would like to give them the one year.
Okay, give me just a minute here.
That's my recommendation. I don't know what the rest of council thinks.
Pam, I have, um, a comment. So we are trying to fill five two-year terms, which were the longer terms. And the people that voted for here, obviously, the top votes. So even though Stephen said he was willing to do one or two, I think we should give him two, given that he actually got seven votes. So I think we should give him a two-year term.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I agree.
Good point.
I'll move them down.
And then the one year would be Molly Luke, just because she's her age. And then if we find two other people, give them one year. I agree. Good idea.
Okay, so we have two vacancies for one year, so I'm setting that aside.
Yeah.
Okay, um, Fine Arts Board. We have two openings. Actually, that one was a lot quicker than I thought it was.
All right.
But yeah.
What are you doing, Scott?
I'm not cussing anymore, that's it.
Lean?
Leave.
You're such a lawyer.
It's doing things. Uh, who hasn't voted? One, two, three.
Karina hasn't voted.
And neither is Carol. Okay, it Karina, did you vote?
No, did we find a spot for Allison Johnson yet?
It it's not going to matter what you vote, Karina. You wait too long.
Everybody has already voted to reappoint.
Yep.
So it's six and six, right?
Yep, there you go. Guess you don't need my vote.
We need it. We just.
There you go.
Okay.
We're down to the last two.
We are down to Board of Adjustment and Board of Appeals, and then we need to go back to HPV and, um, Next Gen.
All right, we have three openings.
We have three openings. Uh, one has reapplied. And Dave McFadden is off the table because we put him on the Planning Commission.
Sorry, which one are we doing now?
We are doing Board of Adjustment. And we have three openings.
All right.
Bad is off, okay.
So unless someone throws in a wild card here.
Remember, we're not throwing in wild cards yet.
We weren't doing that, yeah.
Well, since we have three openings and three applicants, do we just want to look at how those line up?
Yeah, I I mean, we're not throwing in extras.
Yeah.
I voted.
Jerry?
I did too.
Mayor, since we have three applicants in three positions.
Yeah, we still got to vote.
What what do you what do you got there, Jerry?
I don't know. What did I type? What did I say?
I I don't know.
I have the same thing you said. I I.
I knew what you meant.
Was my finger off the side?
I knew what you meant.
Uh, the same as Pam's is what I just put in.
Scott, you only gave me two names.
I'm only going to give you two names.
Same. Same.
Really?
Really.
Okay, Lynn, let me go back because here I thought this was going to be easy, squeezy, and y'all are throwing stuff in.
Well, again, it's going to be. Doesn't really matter, though, does it?
Yeah.
Doesn't really matter.
Except for it kind of does because whoever gets the most. Because we have one term that needs to be completed.
We have one full term, one alt, and one replacement.
So we actually have two full terms. The alternate is a full term.
Yeah, we have to determine which one is alt.
Right, so give me just a minute here. I got all comfortable thinking I wasn't going to have to count.
Well, if there's a reason other council members only put two names in, they feel comfortable, like like an explanation. I mean, is this is something that maybe is worth discussing? If you feel comfortable.
Yeah.
Well, wait, wait, maybe wait to see what she comes up with.
Pam, what?
Is there something I missed? So something I missed, maybe?
Let's just, Pam, let's see what we have.
Okay, so Donna Goodread actually got the most votes. I think it was the CIA thing that did it.
Yeah.
No, because she's from D4.
Huh?
Because she's from D4. No, I'm kidding.
How many did Donna get?
Donna got seven.
What are, what, what do we have? Donna got seven.
So Donna would go to the full term position, correct?
Unless we want to move Catherine up.
Well, I'm in favor of moving Catherine up.
Well, we have two full-term positions, though. So we could move Catherine up.
How many did she get?
She got six.
Okay.
So we can move her up with a 2024 term, regular.
Okay.
We, we would move Carolyn Wolvan up to alt one. We have a vacant alt two right now, until I get through these counts. Donna would then take the other full term.
That's good, Goodread, you were talking, we're voting with last names, not first names.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Goodread, yes. She would take the position vacated by Don Jenna not reapplying, and have a full term to 2024. And then Albrecht would take the position vacated by Mike Madrid, which goes through
I, I'm confused.
Okay.
So can you tell us the count first? Can you give us?
I'm sorry, Karina?
Can you give us the count for the names? Who's got seven?
So Donna Goodread got seven. Catherine Holland was six, and Doug Albrecht was five.
So Catherine moves up.
Yeah, she moves up to a regular.
Right.
So that gives us an alt one and an alt two.
So Carolyn Wolvan is alt two now, she would move up to alt one. It just leaves us.
Or regular, or she could also go to regular.
And we could. That's, that's entirely your choice.
That would be my preference. She has experience on the board already.
That would be, I would, I would go along with Jerry on that.
I'm with Jerry and Carol.
Okay, so then do we want to move, do we want to move her up to the next full term and put Goodread in the partial term vacated by Mike Madrid?
No, Goodread got the most, Goodread got the most votes. She got seven, so she should have a full term as her voting.
If we move up the two alternates, there's no regular positions open. Catherine moves up, Carolyn moves up, and then there's two opens, and they, and.
It would both be alternate.
Right, and the hot, and Goodread, who got the highest, would alternate one, and Albrecht is alternate two.
Right, yeah, with a, a term date of 23.
Okay.
That makes sense?
That works.
Yeah, written down.
I, I disagree with that, too. I think that Goodread got the most votes. She should probably be a regular.
But, but wait a minute, we're not taking into account, how many votes did the alts get when they got elected? For example, Carolyn Wolvan, I remember, got seven votes. So a year ago, Carolyn Wolvan got seven votes, which is the same number that Goodread is getting now.
And she was still made a.
Yes, seniority, seniority works. People that are on the board usually move up.
And that's what we often do, and I like doing that.
Okay, so I just want to, Mayor, if I might, I just want to make sure I'm clear here. So we're moving Catherine Holland up to a regular full-term position.
Yep.
Carolyn Wolvan to a regular full-term position.
Right.
Donna Goodread to alternate one. With a term of 2024. And Albrecht with a term of 23 is alternate two.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Four of us are in favor of that.
So if we have someone that got the most votes, remember Catherine and Donna right now, or Goodread and Holland are just back at the table, you know, competing for the same position. And so to me, the person that gets the most votes gets the regular term. The person that gets the next votes get, get the, the next whatever block, so that it be.
No, you move the alternates up, and then you do the alternate based on votes.
You're, and you're absolutely right, Pam. I think Carolyn, that's an alternate now, should be moving up.
But Catherine Holland is also an alternate.
And, and she, the alternates move up, and there's two openings. And you give, you give the alternate one to Goodread, because she's got the highest, and alternate two to Albrecht, who got the second highest.
Yep.
I think that's what I have, Karina.
We're saying the same thing.
Yeah, let's, let's move on to the next one, I think we got that one.
Wait, does it matter that only three of us, three of us have not voted for three people? Does that matter?
No.
No.
I mean, we only have. There's three of us that have only voted for two people, sorry, not three.
Well, you should have voted for four.
I wa, I only, I'm, I'm fine to have only voted for two.
That's okay.
Is there something that we, we need to be aware of?
No.
No. I think we just need to move on.
All right.
Building Board of Appeals.
Building Board of Appeals, we have four vacancies. And Catherine Holland is off the table, because we just put her back on BOA.
Yes.
So I guess the question is, so we.
Well, didn't we put Hubbard somewhere else, too, I thought?
No, we did not.
Okay.
No. He's in limbo.
I'm going to vote for two right now, I know which two I'm going for.
Me, too.
Okay, why are we putting extra names in? We're not there yet.
I don't know, just, just to confuse everybody.
Kelly. Do that later.
Yeah, I'm confused enough, Kelly. Okay, they each got seven votes.
Okay, good.
So.
That part was easy.
And they're both regular, so they go to 2024.
All right, so we'll have to, we'll have to address the other alt one and alt two later, tonight.
Well, so, so, wait a minute, so Matt Trainan is currently alt one. Wouldn't we move him up into the third, the third full term?
Yes.
Yes.
So he goes regular, and then we have vacant alt one and two.
Yeah, Trainor's right. We're, we're left with alt one and two.
Yeah.
When do we want to do that? Do you guys ready to do it now?
Shouldn't we take, look at the three boards that we have to fill?
Yeah, we have HPP, Next Gen, and Building Board of Appeals for vacant, for the alternates.
We have, HPP has one, Next Gen has two, and Building Board of Appeals, too?
That's correct.
I think let's get some agreement on which, which order we take these in.
I, I would like to go HPP.
I agree.
Anybody else? You okay with that? Anybody else?
And we're looking to fill the alternate two position on HPP.
So we're looking to replace one slot?
On HPP, it would be the alternate two.
Yeah, and it's just that one slot, right?
Just that one slot.
Yeah.
It's anybody.
And we can vote for whoever we want.
Well, hopefully, hopefully, it would be somebody who expressed interest.
Well, I have somebody to put forward.
And that would, okay, everybody, wait just a minute, please.
Okay, sorry.
This just comes as a giant stream of consciousness? So is everyone just voting for one person here?
Yeah.
Yes.
So I'm going to have to write names in here as they come up.
So now we give you our name?
Yep.
Yeah, and these are people that said they would serve wherever.
Agreed.
Pam, who are you going to suggest?
I was going to suggest Beth Ann Michaels. She seemed very interested in a variety of things, and I think she, she would jump in if it's of interest to her at all.
Yeah, and I went with Jason Hend, I went with Jason Henderson, because he's been on the lift board, we terminated, he was on the library board, we terminated, and he was very active on both of those. He's, he is a well-spoken person who participates.
He's also a lawyer who gets the quasi-judicial aspect of this.
That's a good point.
What, what, Scott?
I said he's also an attorney and will, will understand the quasi-judicial aspect of this.
Correct.
An attorney, maybe we should just remove him in that case.
Who are you changing your vote to, Kelly?
Henderson.
Thank you. Who hasn't voted?
I'm Henderson as well.
Okay, Karina?
I think the point of being a lawyer, Scott, is right on, especially since we're going to be doing, we're looking to do direct district, and that comes into private property rights as well, so I think it's insightful, helpful, too.
Does he have to vote?
He got five votes.
All right, he's in.
Yay.
That was all two.
I don't, I don't disagree with you, Pam, about Beth, though.
Yeah, she's, it would be nice to find a place for her.
Well, Next Gen, we have two spots.
She's too old for Next Gen, unfortunately.
You said, so Pam, Greg Anderson is, is under, he's 29?
29.
And I have him on, he's on my list of someone I'd like to find a place for.
Me, too.
Okay, well, I need two names for Next Gen.
Next Gen again.
We find that one.
Another name.
Was there anybody else on this list that is, that we don't see on our people table besides Greg?
You know what? If we had 14 instead of 15, that would be okay, it's still a large number.
I will, Michael Stegner has, I don't think is in a position yet, and he did write a note that it wasn't his best performance. I think he was good, but I didn't think he was great, so I may give him the benefit of the doubt.
If, if you want to, that's fine. The only thing is, he said he was very, very.
Trevor, Trevor Mogul, I like him.
Michael was very, very busy, and one of the issues we've had with this committee is attendance and continuity, and that was my concern.
Let me go back and relook at my notes.
How many are we selecting on this one?
Two.
So we've got one.
I have five votes for Anderson.